Remember when the, our eternity, they used to be here, it was really running down there. So I remember when Jeremy Lassner would always do this, because he was so, like, big fucking hunk of a, he was also a champion. And now he's down in front. He's, uh, 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 he's,[1251.11] The AQT rules will only apply for core academic areas when a school or district has a waiver from licensure, so for an approved charter or for schools who have a waiver under Act 1240. And they would also apply in core academic areas for special education teachers or ALE teachers. And to go into a little bit of detail why these AQT rules will be necessary for special ed. Our federal requirements for, to receive federal funding required us to assure one of two things. We either had to assure that all of our special education teachers would be fully licensed in 2016-17, meaning no one could be on a provisional license, no one could be working towards special education licensure, and that's not realistic because we know right now about 18% of our special ed teachers are not fully licensed. Or states had to assure that special ed teachers who were licensed would also meet previous requirements for HQT. So we signed the assurance stating that we would follow that. I think most states are choosing that option because they, like Arkansas, are struggling to have 100% of their special ed teachers fully licensed. AQT provisions are going to be a little more flexible than HQT, but we're going to allow those who were previously HQT to meet the Arkansas qualified teaching requirements. So anyone who was HQT before will be HQT now, or AQT now. Schools will not have to go back and redo paperwork. As far as reporting requirements, schools will not be reporting by sending in, every school district having to send in data on every teacher, the reporting will all be done in e-school through the regular scheduling process, which will greatly streamline the work for districts. We have both short and long-term goals to address teacher effectiveness. Over the past year, we've had several new initiatives for Grow Your Own teacher programs. We've had several partnerships formed, and we look forward to continuing the conversation as we go into the 2017 legislative session, as we work on our ESA plan. And we're going to look at as many opportunities as we can to promote effectiveness and to recognize and reward effective teaching, and we'll keep you updated through the process.
Thank you. Ms. Savers has a question.
Thank you. Do you know the percentage of our teachers currently in Arkansas that are HQT?
I would have to go back and look at what has been reported, but it has always been almost 100%.
Exactly. That's always been a little bit of an issue for me because I just felt like if everybody's going to be highly qualified, then what does that really mean? So I hope that the new AQT will more accurately reflect the qualities and qualifications of a teacher.
And I think in the short term, we will be, as we transition to fully implementing all of our ESA requirements, I think short term, it will be a bridge between where we are now and where we want to go in the future. I do think that with the, with the requirements under ESA, there will be changes in how we look not only at just quality and quali, or qualified teachers, but the effectiveness of them. And so those are, those are going to be long-term commitments and goals and conversations.
Do you have any idea how you're going to measure effectiveness or ineffectiveness in teachers and leaders?
Right now, with our equitable access plan, part of the definition of an excellent teacher is a teacher or leader who demonstrates proficient or distinguished ratings in their tests or LEADS evaluation. And as we know, those tests and LEADS evaluations have multiple components to them. We'll keep looking at those systems as well and looking at all of the different criteria that schools will have to use to demonstrate their effectiveness. So it's really an opportunity for us to pull in all of our accountability measures, all of the criteria that we, that we're going to look at. And ESA really gives states a lot of opportunities to be innovative in what we look at to determine quality and effectiveness at a teacher level, at a school level, and at a district level.
Is growth included?
Not right, student growth data is not included in a teacher's rating at this time. We're still having those conversations and looking at what does that need to look like? So we haven't made those decisions yet.
Yes, one of the things that struck me is that it's very likely, maybe in all districts, but especially the larger districts, that staffing may have to be done from the central office level because they know the overall makeup. And if you allow the principal to select her own people, then the really good principals are going to select the cream of the crop at the very beginning. And with this requirement, that disparities of low-income and minority students being taught by these teachers that are more experienced or whatever, that the whole idea from the administrative point of view may be to come at it from the central office point instead of just from the building.
And I think, I think you're making some very good points. I think our first, our first responsibility is to provide the data so that schools and districts can really take a deep look at that data, look to see are the disparities, and from the state perspective, are disparities statewide? Or are there disparities even among districts? But I think if we give people good data to use to make good decisions, we'll see a lot of good outcomes for students.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda, which includes the consent items and also the minutes for, for March the 10th, March the 18th, and March 31st. Is there any desire by the board to pull any of these matters? Dr. Bar?
There was a small error on the minutes from March 31st. The vote on the Lisa Academy proposal was, was off by one, so I don't know.
It's 5/3, not 6/3.
Yeah. 5/3, not 6/3, Ms. Carle.
So on C3, the, the March 31st minutes. And then I did have a question about C21.
So you wanted to pull that or just ask a question?
Actually, can we just pull it off?
Okay, we'll pull C21. Okay. Are there any other questions or is there a desire from any other board member to pull an item for discussion?
I have a question on C22 that probably doesn't need pulling, just a quick answer that someone could give me. Wondering if the changes are a result of legislation or lessons learned during the Jacksonville detachment?
There is legislation changes, but we also included a first-year funding package that is kind of a result of having a detachment of Jacksonville North Plassey.
And the number changed from four to 2,500, was that?
That was legislation.
Legislation, okay, thank you.
So that clears that for you? Okay. Then with the exception of C21, could we get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Hook, could get a second?
Second.
By Ms. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Moving on to the action agenda. I'm sorry, no, C21.
Yeah, so Ms. Reinhardt, could you just walk me through, this is, this, these are rules that don't go out for public comment?
No, they are public comment, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was what was, that was what was confused on the agenda. It didn't say public comment, and so.
We are asking that you approve these for public comment.
I have no problem, I just, that, that, I thought we were doing something more than that and I wanted to be, I thought we weren't. Okay, so I'm, I'm good to go.
You want to move?
I move that we approve the, those rules for public comment.
For C21, move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Bar, second by Mr. Black. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we're down to the action agenda. I'd like to note that A11 is being pulled, and A21 through A42 will be heard together. So we'll start with A1, Ms. McKinney. Consideration of 2016-2017 Arkansas Better Chance Renewal Grant Applications. She's here. Right now, we'll see if we can find her. Okay, Kim is ready. If she's not here, so we'll move then to.
She may be here at 10:00.
Okay, maybe here at 10:00. I think I'll be here at 10:00, too. A2, A2, consideration, no, that's Ms. McKinney, too. Moving on then to A3, is Stacy Smith, Thomas Coy here for consideration of adoption of mathematics standards?
Good morning, Stacy Smith with Learning Services. Very proud today to be here to put forth the consideration of the new math standards. It would be very presumptuous of me to stand here alone and say that I did all this work. Actually, I have to give a lot of credit to the unit of curriculum instruction, Thomas Coy, who is standing right here behind me, and I'm going to actually let him put the motion forward in a second because he actually kind of led this process. This involved teachers from all over the state. It involved two pretty in-depth surveys. The last survey, which was actually the set of standards that's before you, went out for community feedback. We had over 3,000 responses. A lot of those responses were actually groups of teachers, so it only counted as one response. But we received feedback on the work that was done. That gave us the opportunity to go back, pull a group of people together, and do another additional clarification to make sure that what we put out as the final document is good for classrooms all over the state. The main goal within these standards was to give Arkansas teachers a document that was very clear about what the intention of the standard was, what it meant. That was something very early on, when we pulled in teachers together and we were looking at our previous set of standards, what we thought was very clear, as we had it set in, Ms. Newton over here shaking her head because she was a part of this process. But we would have a group of teachers from a grade level sitting around a table talking about a standard, and they were interpreting it differently, and that was a problem. And so with, much of the work was spent around making sure that it was clear, okay? I'm going to actually turn it over to Tommy for a second, let him have a few comments, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Key, thank you for allowing us to present this item to you today. I'm very excited about this work, the culmination. It's actually not done, but the big, the big bulk of this work that we're bringing to you today, as, as Ms. Smith said, really represents the hard work of educators across the state. And we heard the governor's counsel and the task force very clearly that they wanted educators from Arkansas heavily involved in this process, and that's exactly what we did. So I'm very proud of the work that was done. Just a few things that might clarify some things that you've seen, and then again, I'll be happy to answer any content questions. Overall, about 65% of the, the previous standards were revised, and of course, some of the criticism may be, well, you, you didn't change a lot of content. And that's true, because I think our teachers understood that really the math content is the math content. We want our elementary children to be fluent in, with number sense and math, math facts and skills. So that didn't change a whole lot. But we did revise in the hopes that these standards could be better implemented, or implemented with more fidelity across the state and across districts. So we didn't see a huge disparity in the ways that some districts were implementing versus how others were implementing. So I'm very pleased with the work, and again, about 65% of the standards were revised. Those revisions could come in the form of teacher notes, notes of clarification that again, help guide the teacher. There were a lot of notes added, especially at the elementary or lower grades, about what the expectation for the younger children would be in the classroom, because there was quite a bit of criticism on the front end about are the standards developmentally appropriate or are they not? So hearing from teachers saying, this is what it should look like in a kindergarten classroom, we tried to capture some of those things. This is what an assessment might look like in, in third grade, without dictating that curriculum, but at least giving some guidance as to what the expectation was that was, that would be age-appropriate. So I'm very proud of that work. We did add a few new standards that, you know, one of the questions that I ask at the end of each grade band, teachers who've been teaching for 15, 20, 30 years, what's not here that you've taught for a long time that you think is important? We asked those questions and we added some standards into the document. You do not see before you today high school courses. Our intention is if you approve these standards today, we will bring high school courses back to you next month, to, if you, if you'd like to see the actual breakdown of Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. It's difficult sometimes to build a course, and then if you change one standard, if you were to ask us to do something different, it would actually have a domino effect and we would have to change several, several courses at that time. So if the standards meet with your approval today, we, we happy to bring those courses back to you for consideration at your next regular meeting. Are there any questions? I'm happy to entertain any questions about the process or about the content.
Ms. Hook has a question.
For those districts who did what they were asked and quickly aligned their curriculum to the previous standards, will there be much work on their part to have to align the curriculum to these, or will it just be a matter of tweaks?
I, I think it's, it's probably more a matter of tweaking. We, we did try to keep the nomenclature the same, so really we changed the Common Core State Standard Part to Arkansas. And if we added new standards, we added it at the end. So in terms of paperwork and numbering, it should be relatively easy. There are some, what I would consider substantive changes, even though there were some, you know, most of these were revisions. There were some things that were added at certain grade levels. I know kindergarten teachers wanted to work from zero to 10, fluency within 10 rather than, rather than within five. We got a lot of public comment about that in our external review that we conducted, Stacy can talk about that, but it affirmed the work that those teachers did. But I think for the most part, Ms. Hook, it will be, it will be a relatively easy change.
And, and maybe we'll tell them what you added or what you tweaked so they won't have to find it?
Yes.
And also, this proposal today that we're, we're really submitting is, we would like the, the adoption for that. School districts may begin the implementation this next school year, but full implementation begins the 2017-18 school year. That allows districts the time to truly align their curriculum and their materials without pulling the plug on everybody right here in the summer to say, get everything changed. It also allows the time for the professional development unit to slowly start working and our educational cooperative specialists to begin working with districts to make changes that they need to make. You know, there are changes, but the nomenclature's the same, the content on a lot of the standards is the same, but the clarification of exactly what the intention is for that standard is where we've got to get schools all on the same page. And so lots of work will be, be around that.
Ms. Savers, you have a question?
I do. And I think this is kind of following up on Ms. Hook's question, but in your opinion, is the rigor lessened at all?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Newton is shaking her head. You have a comment, Ms. Newton?
Just that I'm, I'm very proud of these standards. We worked really hard on, on working together and coming to a consensus about what the standard said, but these standards are strong. We are going to ask our students to be critical thinkers, to be problem solvers. We're not throwing away the fluency. The fluency is still there, the computation skills are there, but students are going to have to take those skills and apply them to the real world and, and at that level of rigor that they need in order to be able to be competitive in the job market and, and not just around in their local community, but state and nationwide and even globally.
And in fact, what's kind of funny is in some of the standards, when we had Arkansas teachers around the table, it was, this isn't hard enough. With this standard, we need to add more to it, and that was seen many times in, in the discussion with teachers. There wasn't a teacher in the room who wanted to make it less.
Okay, any other questions? Dr. Bar?
So obviously, we switched tests in, in advance of these standards being developed. Were there any alterations in the standards kind of tied to the shift to the ACT?
You'll see that more in the English Language Arts standards than you will with math. There was some, some language arts skills that were added into the English Language Arts as far as the actual shifting of content in the standards. For math, there, there wasn't a lot. Tommy, do you want to add anything else to that part?
In, in geometry, based on what we know about just the regular ACT, the one that our students will take in 11th grade, there were some standards added into the geometry course because again, that test is about 40% geometry, and there were some things that we didn't see explicitly stated in the geometry course. So you'll see some additions there. You'll also see when we bring forth those courses that there was some shifting between Algebra II and Precalculus. There were some things in Precalculus that we know appear on the ACT, so those things were put back into Algebra II. Things that were not going to appear on the ACT that were in Algebra II, a lot of the advanced level statistics are being moved to a statistic, a standalone statistics class. So when we bring those courses, you'll see some of the shifts that, that took place at the high school level. That's where I saw most of the, of the shifts because that's the test right now that we know the most.
So, thanks. So that, that, that shifting of, of material kind of up to that, that statistics course, do we have any worry that with the, with the arrival of the computer science, the opportunity to take computer science, which can replace one of the math courses? Are we worried at all about students losing that content because they make a determination to take a computer science course rather than their, their final math course?
I feel better about the Algebra II course now, and Ms. Newton, I think she agrees, I feel better about the content that all students would get if they made it through Algebra II. I, I feel okay with a standalone statistics class. That was actually a huge criticism from the very beginning of, of the writing of Common Core, that it was very heavy in statistics at nine, 10, 11, 12. So I, I feel better, I mean, that's just my personal feeling, I feel better about the Algebra II course, and I feel really good that we're going to have a very, very rich statistics course for students who perhaps wanted to, to study statistics or AP statistics. So I'm sure there, there may be others that disagree, but I, I feel good about the work that was done and feel good about the content that all students would get through Algebra II if they completed that course.
Thanks. Do you have any comments on that? Do you agree?
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
Make a comment if I may, Madam Chair. Just one to brag on the work of this group, Stacy, Tommy, and, and the whole group, and not to, to forget the contributions of Dr. Jones, who was assistant commissioner when we kicked this off. But just the, yeah, this was an unprecedented process. The live streaming, the openness, the ability of, of outside observers to, to be able to come in and watch how this process took place, taking into account a lot of the work, Ms. Dean, that your group with the review committee did, and just, so you all will know that the work certainly doesn't stop here. One of the recommendations that the review task force asked for us to consider was a, an app that teachers, educators could use to easily access the standards, and we've talked to Dr. Saunders about that, so that work is going to continue. And if, if you all look at QuickLinks, it very possibly will look something like QuickLinks, will be a mobile device compatible, and it may not be an app as such, but it may be a QuickLinks-type approach so that educators can get to those standards quickly. And it's, it's kind of a new phase of access. So if these are adopted, that work's going to continue to make these more available and, and more understandable with all the footnotes, with all the explanations that they have worked so hard to, to put together. So we are very pleased with the outcome of this, and if you all adopt this today, we think this just raises a bar for math education in the state.
Great, great. I'd, I'd like to add my thanks and, and to say, in case some of you haven't heard, Ms. Savers and I, and Ms. Newton will be exiting this board in June, maybe.
How many days?
Yeah, a few days. I can give you the days, but for a couple of us, might be a rah-rah point. But I had a parent of a third, third-grade twins come to me early, last week as a matter of fact, and was pleased about the rigor of, of standards and things that, that were causing her twins to have to do critical thinking, and, and this was in a writing exercise, but she was able to see the difference. So my encouragement to the staff and the board is to continue to increase the rigor, not to the point of being punitive or to the point of causing, whatever it calls if you just went ahead straight away without consideration of different people's abilities to be able to, to keep up. But I think it's a good thing for Arkansas, and I think it's a good thing for our, our schools and our students, and they benefit greatly when being challenged to go a little bit further and to work and think a little bit harder. So thank you for your work. With that said, is there a motion for adoption of the standards?
I need to approve.
Moved by Ms. Savers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Bar. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again for your work. We're now down to item A4, and we're going to move after A4, then we'll consider directly after that, A56, because we're, we think they are connected enough to be done in, in, in that order. So the consideration of Little Rock School District Report of Progress, Mr. Baker Curris, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give a brief update, and today the CAC will not be giving you a specific update. They're both out of town for one thing, and then also I've seen the length of the agenda, and I understand that we want to move quickly. So I will give you a very brief report and then stand for questions. We're proceeding with testing. It's that time of year. It's going well. We geared up and did a lot of work, of course academically in advance of these tests, but also a lot of fundamental work to be sure we had computer systems, access, all the things we needed to be ready for testing, and I think that's going pretty well with very few problems. And I think we'll see how it goes. We should know these, these test scores much more quickly than we did last year, and I think that'll be a help to us. We're also planning a number of summer programs. Every student who's basic or below basic in our elementary schools will have an opportunity for a summer school experience, which is critical. I think that's very vital to, to get, moving our district, especially our, our secondary schools into a position where they're successful. We miss the focus if we focus simply on secondary schools. The secondary schools deal with problems that arise in much earlier grades, and we're addressing that every chance we get. We're also not overlooking our GT kids. We have a little extra money in a budget, and we're putting together what's going to be a very strong GT program for students. All those programs are free, of course. We're also running a summer school program for kids on, who need credit recovery and additional help. That's something most school districts don't do. We, we cut that, it's not funded, of course, by the state, but we do it anyway, and I'm very proud that we do that. Our CAC is going to give me a report pretty quickly. They finished most of their research and work. They're going to get together one more time as a group, collaborate and bring forward a report. They'll also bring forward a facilities report, which is critical. We need to, to understand the facilities report that they bring me. It'll be advisory, I keep saying that. I'm getting advice, and there's a difference. That mean I won't take it. That don't mean I won't bring it forward to you. It just means it's advisory, and I respect it very much and I appreciate their hard work. They've worked very, very hard. Let me update you on a couple of our building projects. The Southwest Little Rock School project is going extremely well. Of course, you know we've hired architects. Mr. Burton has convened numerous groups. Everybody who's involved in the delivery of service in that school has been convened with the architects so that the school will be designed around the things that we want to do in the building, as opposed to the other way around, where we get a building and then decide how to use it. We're, we're taking a bottoms-up approach, talking to people who will actually be in the building, who will be bringing forward a program for the students in the building, and then designing the building so that facilitates the delivery of those things that our students need. It's critical, Mr. Burton's taking the lead on that on top of what he's already doing. And we're working really hard. We're working really hard. Our people are working really hard in the classroom, in the administration building, working Saturdays, had a meeting at 8 o'clock. Had a meeting at eight o'clock last Saturday, everybody was there and on time. So that shows you the level of dedication that we've got in our, in our school district right now. I'm really excited about the Southwest Little Rock School. It's the linchpin for a whole lot of things that can happen once we get that done. And it's a part of getting that done. It'll make a big difference. The West Little Rock School is coming right along as well. You may, we've actually been together, but I haven't talked to you about the fact that we were in federal court in March, March 22nd and 23rd in a hearing in which that's certain people have moved to enjoin the construction of that school. We prevailed in that hearing after two long days of hearings. The hearing closed on a, late on a Wednesday night and by Friday morning, we had purchased the property. We bought the property for eleven point five million dollars, probably spent a hundred thousand dollars on various fees and commissions and it appraised for over twenty million dollars. We backed that appraisal down because it's an insurance appraisal and you have to always be cautious when you get insurance appraisals. You want to buy all the insurance you need, but not a bit more. But I'm, I'm convinced and we ultimately insured the building for well over nineteen million dollars. And I think that's, those two buildings, I think that's a fair appraisal of what they're actually worth. And we're working hard. We, we, the work is ongoing. I was going to go by there this morning, but it was raining, so I didn't. But we're working hard in the building. We'll have the sixth grade open. Jay, Dr. Jay Pickering's working to hire the staff. We've already interviewed innumerable people, including assistant principals. We've got all the curriculum offerings have been derived from, again, a bottoms up approach by talking to parents and students about what they wanted in the school. We've derived the curriculum offerings. That's all set. We're hiring the people. They were interviewing assistant principals the other day. We've got applications from, I know at least as far away as Minnesota because we skyped in and I said hello to an applicant from Minnesota. Moving very rapidly, but again, that's a critical step in building enrollment, not just in that school, but in the schools that feed it, which are Terry Roberts and Fulbright. We had a lot of slippage in those third, fourth, and fifth grades as students moved from those schools into private alternatives because they were uncertain about middle school. We're solving that problem and I think, and by the time we get done, I think we'll have a, a thousand student middle school, maybe bigger than that. And it's going to be world-class. We have financial challenges that, that I need to emphasize. We have tremendous financial challenges. They're enrollment-driven. Everything we do that impacts enrollment will have an impact financially, of course, because that's the way we're funded. We're working hard every day to try to figure out how to deliver the same service or better service with fewer people and to do it at less cost. We're doing that in, in all sorts of areas, everything from staffing of teachers with our, our partners at LREA. We are going to initiate more duty by teachers. They're willing and excited about it. I say excited, that might be an overstatement, but-
Maybe.
I think it probably is. But I mean, there's no pushback. This is a marvelous partnership and we solved a problem with our teachers that never should be overlooked in, in distress situations. It's that they're our partners. They're not the enemy. They're the people we have to work with and you can't put that off five or six years after a state takeover. You have to deal with that first up and we've done a marvelous job, thanks to our teachers who are the most important group of people in the building next to the students. And then we all serve them. We understand that. But we have tremendous financial challenges. I don't want you to misunderstand me. This is going to be difficult, but we're working hard and we're making some progress. You saw the rewards program that the state announced the other day, same program that we've had. We got a lot of awards, but again, it shows you the nature of our school district where we have, we have well over two thousand students in elementary schools who attend schools that are in the top five or 10% of the state. Think about that. We have, it's actually twenty-three hundred, Barbara gave me the numbers, twenty-three hundred and some odd, twenty-three hundred and fifty-five students who attend a school which is ranked in the top 10% of the state. Most of those are the top 5%. In the same time, we have academic distress and state takeover. Think about the district that, that has that kind of dichotomous existence and it's very challenging, but it's, it's coming along. I just want to emphasize a couple of things because we don't do it enough. We had two Dell Scholarship winners. And we have, we have what, fifteen, sixteen national merit finalists and every kind of winner you ever seen at Central, but these kids came out of Hall and Fair. And I'm real proud of them. Erica Braswell from Hall and Natalie Amos from McClellan. I said Fair, it was McClellan. But we've got other kids that are doing great at, at Fair. We just, I talked to a young woman the other day, trying to decide between a number of wonderful schools with, with full scholarships. And so let's don't overlook those schools either. People talk about what's the change and they don't understand transformational change. But I thought I'd give you one other statistic and then I'll sit down and say, by the end of June, we will have at least eighteen new principals from the time I started. I've been on the job less than a year. We'll have eighteen new principals and we'll have at least three new department heads. We will have reorganized the way that we deliver safety and security services, the way we use aides, the way we schedule all of our teachers. It's, that's called transformational change and it comes incrementally, but it can be very large when you look in, in retrospect. I'd be happy to answer questions with respect to the planning item, but I, I have no remarks with, y'all have heard plenty of me about some of those issues. I think I'll just stand down, be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions? I think you need to stay up there.
I wanted to compliment all the hard work that you do. We often hear that there are no plans, but obviously you, Mr. Key, the teachers, the parents, they all are involved and, and there's a lot of good things going on as a result of your leadership and, and planning. One thing that I'm going to try to start statewide, and there were so many good advocacy groups here during our March 31st meeting that wanted to run it by you. I've talked to Dean Rutherford over at the Clinton School and we'll be talking, but I'd like to start, or see started in the state, a thing that I'm calling Child Advocates in the Public Education or Public Schools, CAPS, CAPE, however you want to, I'm not real good at acronyms, but, and what these people would do would be similar to what we do in the juvenile courts with CASA. And Judge Stephen Choak started that program and, and many of the district courts do it. But it would be people that we would train to advocate an adult, to advocate for a child that maybe their parent is too bashful to do it, doesn't know how to do it, is working, can't do it, or maybe the child just doesn't have a adult. So we can maybe address some of the issues that we find with kids who don't have an additional advocate other than the teachers and the principal for that school and see if we can affect the discipline issue, see if we can affect the truancy issue, the achievement issue. And as I talked with superintendents, if, you know, anybody that's interested, then I, I, I'm excited about this. I think it'll work. I may, you know, have people find that it won't, but you know, you won't get anywhere if you never try. So I just wanted to let you know that I had talked with Dean Rutherford because that is it here in the, your district and perhaps some of the advocacy, advocacy groups will take an interest in this because everybody keeps saying, what can I do? How can I help? And this isn't a huge time-consuming thing, but just one more volunteer opportunity. We'll try to get a little funding. It won't take much because we will have to do background checks, but it's not significant and we have a pattern with the CASA program about how it might work. But anyway, put that in your head and noodle it around and if it's something you'd think you would be interested in, in the Little Rock School Districts or even just one building or just one grade or just one classroom, then you know, we'll start small and, and see if it works and how it works. So wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Burris, Curris? Okay, if not, could we get a motion on his report?
Move to accept the report.
Move to accept by Mr. Blank. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on then because this is directly related to, and so Mr. Curris can, can be here to, and not have to wait until this afternoon. Consideration of motion for, of A56. Consideration of motion for strategic plan regarding the collaboration of traditional public schools and open enrollment public charter school in Pulaski County. As all of you probably know, this came out as a consideration and action item based on our meeting here on March the 31st. So Commissioner Key?
Just introductory comments to remind you some of the conversation we had in, on the 31st. The work of bringing together groups for collaboration is, is ongoing. It has been for, for a few months now and reaching out to some of the organizations. And as I'm sitting here and I heard Ms. Zook talk about the Clinton School and Dean Rutherford, it occurs to me that, you know, there's a, a great location and a great partner that could possibly help with this as well. But you know, there are examples, as I mentioned last month, about urban areas and planning that they have done. I've, I've learned since then of an effort in Kansas City that also looks at quality seats, which I think is a, one of the points of discussion that Dr. Barth had raised. So there are organizations that do this type of work that could help us. So you know, we, I think earlier this week, we sent out the proposal that is attached here to the document that Dr. Barth and Ms. Clay, I think, did a lot of work crafting. And looking forward to the conversation of the board to see what direction you all want us to take in making this happen.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
One thing I was thinking is in light of the report that Ms. Pepper gave earlier with the ESSA and all that they're doing and, and sort of evolving into the compliance with that, which addresses many of these things. And also I think most of you were here the night after we had a, during one of our work sessions when the Department of Education went over their vision and, and the points they're making. So I'm not sure, but what, since we're already looking at statewide, which will then apply to Pulaski County, that we want to get this specific when, not knowing how that will, you know, work itself through and, and come out. Obviously, these are good points all, but, but somehow it feels like we're maybe predetermining some things because I think all of the things that Dr. Barth so obviously put a lot of thought into these kind of things, but some of which are the very same kinds of things ESSA is looking for. And I think the only objection I would have here is I would think it would need to be Pulaski County-wide, not just south of the river. And then perhaps the six senators who represent the, the whole county. That way, everybody's included because we learned that the charters have people from all over the county and when we get to Dr. Kimbrel's presentation, also from Bryant and, you know, a lot of other places. So have no problem with the study, think it's a great idea, just don't want to get too specific when we've got ESSA and the ADE's vision that they're already working on. You know, I don't want to pile too many things on top. Does that make sense, Dr. Barth?
Well, yes and no. I, I think that, that unquestionably, lots of other folks are doing lots of thought about the way in which we deliver public education. But I do think that as we, as we, you know, focus in on a particular community, we know that there are specific challenges and opportunities in a given place. And I think what's important here, and I go back to this, the last sentence in the first paragraph, as we talked, as staff and I talked the other day, we know that we've got lots of communities in the state where, where traditional public schools and open enrollment charters are really coexisting. And we need to think through how we create an ecosystem of education in these places that makes sense and will be good for all of those entities. And so the thought here is that because we have, as a result of, that was made so clear on the 31st, that we, we have a, a, a unique issue in, in South Pulaski County because of the fact that LRSD is under state control and is, is, is feeling pressure from new charter proposals, that we need to think through how, how it may, how, most immediately, how this can all work together south of the river. That said, we know we have issues in Pine Bluff, we know we have issues in the Delta, we have issues even in Northwest Arkansas where, where we have both traditional public education and, and, and charters existing. And we need to be thoughtful, just as, as, as we'll continue tomorrow with our work session on how we are more, as a, as an agency, more thoughtful about the way in which we create and evaluate charter schools. It seems that we also need to be thoughtful about when, when new charters are created, that there, there is a real sense of how they fit with other traditional public education. And this can hopefully become something of a model, how, how we might do this in other communities around the state that are very different. And so I do think there are some, some specific issues that are nearing a, nearing some real points of tension south of the river. I think that was made very clear on the 31st and, and the events leading up to that. And I think this is an attempt to begin to, to tackle those challenges in a thoughtful way so that we, as a board, can make wise decisions moving forward.
Yeah. I guess I'm just thinking with Mr. Woods in Jacksonville, who in his years of experience, and Mr. Rogers in North Little Rock, who had a very successful village campaign and has basically redesigned his thing to, to focus just on where we have challenges, but not bring in the superintendents and their experience from the other Pulaski County schools. It just, it just doesn't seem prudent, but anyway, that was where, that's sort of where I'm coming from.
Yes, Ron.
Now, and if, if I could just expound, I, I think for myself, when reading this, I, I don't think there's any limitations from other stakeholders contributing to the conversation. I, I think this is just about a specific obligation to south of the river. And, and for me, just to add on what Dr. Barth said, to learn from our, our lessons from the first time around. I mean, I, I, I think one of the things I really took away from the 31st was seeing a little over a year later that we were back in the same polarized environment that we were when this decision was made. And, and I think we have a chance here to learn from it, learn through the process and, and do it right. And especially with our obligation with, with, with the takeover. And I think this is one of those ways that we can really demonstrate to all stakeholders in the communities that we, we are intent on doing things differently, learning from our lessons and, and offering something more tangible, right? That is about bringing everyone together for every child and, and, and so that every school is a school that is serving all of our children, so.
Yeah. I guess I just think to, to separate the, the county into parts, used to when I did family counseling, I would say you may have one of the family members who's needing a lot of extra attention, but you can't take away from the other family members who are doing fine. It all needs to work together. And, and I think Pulaski County as a whole, particularly with Pulaski County School District, which is on both sides of the river, and the charters which get children from both sides of the river, you know, that's just where I'm coming from.
Mr. Williamson?
Thank you for saying that because that's what I was about to say also. I, I think that this proposal was, is really overreaching. I mean, I think that, you know, I'm, I had to draw a diagram and try to figure out how in the world you do what your plan is here and I still haven't figured that out. I think that, you know, the commissioner and his staff, you know, his resources here, I think that they've got enough resources and intelligence and wherewithal to go figure this kind of stuff out. You know, and I don't want to discount Mr. Curris's abilities or anything. I mean, I look up to him. He's a former farmer and I mean, there are challenges abound when it comes to farming. And so I think that he's very accustomed to, to dealing with that sort of thing. And I've got the utmost confidence in commissioner to really do this on their own. So I guess what I'm telling you is I'm not going to support this one.
And I wonder too on the, and Ms. Perry is in the room or, or Ms. Boyd, can we- And I wonder too, on the, and Ms. Perry is in the room, or Ms. Boyd, can we force a charter to participate in a plan since they have independent charters? You'd have, or maybe legal, sorry.
Right. We can't compel them, we can give them the opportunity.
Right.
And ask them to volunteer, but we can't compel them.
Okay.
Just a clarification, what I heard on the 31st, that both parties were willing to, to have this happen, I think one of the things it does is if it passes or, or not, but it's an opportunity for a learning lab approach to happen. It's also an opportunity to have a laser approach, you know, just zero in. Your analogy about family, you could bring in all 15 family members, or you could just start to deal with the three that are having problems. I don't know. You know, you bring everybody into the room, then chaos maybe ensues. So I don't, I don't know that a, a simple structured approach might not be something that we might want to consider in this because it's, it's a hot button issue. And I think that we need to give it, give it that thought around, you know, family dynamics are family dynamics, and it's not for us to say. It may come out in the process. But Ms. Savers, you have something?
Well, I, I just wanted to say that in, in the past two or three months, I spent a lot of time talking to people across the country in Indianapolis, Kansas City, Denver. All of these cities are experiencing the same thing that we are. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. There are folks out there that facilitate, that know what they're doing. This is happening, and for us to act like it's not happening, I think would be a huge mistake. Because there is a positive way forward and a way that, that we can all be proud of because it will focus on providing a good seat for every child. And I think that's our, that's our goal. You know, our job is to provide a good education for every child in public school in the state of Arkansas. And this is, I think this is a great plan to begin that, begin that here. And hopefully, you know, it will be a model for the rest of the state, based on what Jay said. I totally agree. So just, just know that this is happening all over the country, and it's, it's not easy, it's hard, but it all begins with getting the right people to the table.
I wonder, does this give the Commissioner and his staff enough flexibility while they're working on ESSA and, and their overall vision to, are we confining, or do you, would this give you enough flexibility to do what it is that needs to be done in light of everything else you're doing?
There's going to be a huge commitment of resources over the next several months to put together a plan with ESSA. And it's, what even adds to that, the burden on those resources is the fact that it's not a, and I'm glad it's not, it's not going to be a agency-driven plan. We have to be the coordinators of that plan, which reaches out to governor legislators and to the local education agencies. So just the magnitude of coordinating that and then being the group that will write the plan, I mean, there is, you're right, there is a lot of work. I think we all understand that. So as, as a, as something that is kind of on top of that, it could be connected, but there's going to be a lot of ESSA work that, that doesn't necessarily fit into the specifics here. The, the effort of, or the, the process of identifying a small stakeholder group that's referenced here, you know, there, there are a lot of organizations that this contemplates that would be providing input and recommendations. And then it states that the Chair and I would be selecting that. I mean, it, it may be July before we get all that input. So it is involved. I won't, we, we've talked about, our leadership team has talked about how involved this could be. We are working, as I mentioned the last couple of meetings, we're working toward that anyway, internally, looking at how we pull in different stakeholders and within the Little Rock and greater Little Rock area. A lot of interest in this. So I think if you, if you tell us generally what you want done and not tell us how to do it, I mean, we'll, we'll get it done. And you give us a time that you want it, you know, a interim report or a final report or something actionable by you all, if you want an actionable report, we will do that. There are, there are some things here that I'm, I'm a little concerned about if it becomes a situation where we have to, through purchase services or through RFPs or that sort of thing, that a stakeholder group that is kind of an ad hoc group, being the group that selects this, we may run into procurement issues as, as a state agency. So that's a concern. And then I, I think certainly from a policy standpoint, the north, the south of the river and the, the greater area at large and its impacts, we know that there are going to be future efforts and desires for detachments that will impact some of these other things. So, you know, I think a broader approach might be better, but it may take longer to get something in place that, you know, I could present to you all that says this is where we think this is going over the next. And you're talking about a, realistically, what's this look like in not just a year, but in five years, 10 years? And, you know, that's the approach that we haven't taken as a state, I think, really that, that has, that keeps us coming back to fight the same fights, have the same arguments. It's important that we take a five, 10, 20-year range approach, as, as I, you know, have, have communicated to you all in talking about our, our vision and strategic direction process that we're going through now. All of that fits in together. How do, how do you make it a piece that I can bring independently to you to say this is how I think we should do? We'll figure that out. We can do it. It's just going to take a lot of effort.
So, three things. First off, and I don't want to minimize the work here for the department, but there was intentionality in trying to move some of this work outside the department. And that's, I think, what we saw with the FORWARD initiative, is that, yes, the department was involved in that work, but a, a lot of the heavier lifting was done out, has been done outside the department in partnership with the department. And that was kind of the, the intention here, first off. Secondly, the, you know, the, the subcommittee of this board that considered Pulaski County boundaries, which, which you were a part of, you know, we identified south of the river as our ultimate vision for what might, what would likely make sense as a single district. And those, that's the spirit that is still guiding this. And the third thing I would, I would say is that, you know, last January 28th, when, when this board voted to take over the district, I think we took big response, a big level of responsibility to get it right. Not to get it right immediately, but to get it right in, in the future. And so this is, I think, my thought about how we begin in a more tangible way than maybe we have today to take responsibility for, for that takeover and what we want to have accomplished as a result of that takeover. We don't want it just to have been a takeover, which caused a lot of angst, caused a lot of folks to do a lot of hard work, and then we end up in the same spot. We want to be in a different spot. And, and the only way which we're going to do it is if we've got a community working together and we've got all of these different educational entities operating in this area working together.
Anybody that hadn't spoken yet? Okay. Then Ms. Savers.
And it's really funny, when you were, I was thinking, when I first read this, this might be an opportunity even for FORWARD to provide a grant for a facilitator so that you could eliminate the procurement issue. Is that what you were specifically talking about, paying for a facilitator?
Yes.
Or a consultant? Yeah. I mean, there, there are a number of folks who do this work and who are quite, quite good at it. So I think that's something we ought to think about.
Ms. Ryan?
And along the similar lines, just to, to remind my colleagues, we did get the grant from NASB as well, that it is about visioning, but I think that that's another resource of funds that have already been allocated to us that, that we can draw on for this. I would though actually like to see if, since Mr. Curris did stay around, he had made in his comments on the 31st about a desire of seeing a plan or, or some sort of greater direction from this board. And I just wanted to see if he had any reactions to, to this proposal.
I'm going to leave it to you. I've got so many thoughts in my head, but I'm going to keep them though.
Then I think everybody has, any board members that haven't been heard, wanted an opportunity to make a statement? Like she does.
Thank you, Madam Johnson. I think with this proposal, for me personally, it seems, it seems really specific. And not having had, you know, a huge opportunity to really delve into that, I'm hesitant about voting for that because I can see the points of including all of Pulaski County. I can see the points of allowing Commissioner Key the flexibility to work with the people that he chooses to work with and, and give him time to formulate a plan that works best for everyone involved. So I'm just hesitant about such a specific proposal. I think there does need to be a plan involved. I think there needs to be collaboration on all parts, but I, I'm just uncomfortable at this point with going with this specific plan. I think there needs to be more, more opportunity for Commissioner Key to have flexibility and time to formulate a plan that's, that's more specific and best for everyone involved in this, so.
Do you have any comments about her concerns?
No, I, yeah, I mean, whatever he said.
Okay. At this point, if there are no further questions, Ms. Chambers, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just one, one comment. It was, it was interesting to hear, the Commissioner is, is very articulate in how he voices his perspective on things. And your speech was halting enough as you were responding, that it really caught my attention in terms of, you're still thinking about this, you're still, you're obviously still processing on this. To what Ms. Dean said, I do think there's a lot still to be worked out on this, but I think it's very, very necessary to start, and a lot of it's going to be judgment. I don't think you can articulate with enough specificity in anticipation of what you want to do, to put it all on paper. So I think it's going to come down to the right people being tapped for this. And I don't envy that duty, but I, I very much trust your judgment that we'll, we'll choose the right people. Because I, I don't know that the delineations will be firm. You're going, as you get into it, you're going to, you're just going to have to make some calls. I very much agree that a part of, part of what's influencing me, because I'm going to vote in support of this, is that, that Baker, the district, the things that are going on within the, the district deserves specificity, deserves specific support from us in terms of the state control. And so I think it's really incumbent on us to be very tied to the community and very connected in what it is that they're needing and wanting, and yet not lose, Ms. Zook, the, the broader connection to the broader state needs. Because this is, I think what will be artful in our leadership is, some of this is very specific to the community, and some of it deserves consistency and application across the state. And that again requires judgment. So I, I, I'm looking to, to you, Commissioner, to make sure you feel comfortable, but I think if you make, if you're able to choose the right people to participate, we'll be fine.
Okay. So now I will say something. And it's just, it's not the, it's not in any way looking to disparage the group that's been working, but when the Civic Advisory Committee was established and on June 15th, Mr. Curris asked them some very specific questions. And we're now nearing 10 months after, and he has still, these reports that he mentioned in his report were generated by those questions. So we're going to be nearly a year into that work. So that, I'm not pointing at that as, as, as saying they haven't been working hard because they have, but the process of getting this work done may not happen by December or, you know, whatever. I think that y'all talked about a date. But at the same time, this needs to happen pretty quickly. I don't, I don't remember, because the, the boundary study was initiated prior to my coming on, and I don't really remember how long that took, but it was.
It was five months, about five months.
So, so, you know, pretty involved.
They were more, I believe, June.
Okay. And just pointing out that, one, the process of identifying these people will take some time. The recommendations, we find that there are some legislators that like email, there are some who prefer US mail, you know, there, there's just a lot of moving parts to this. So I, I want the board to understand that if you move this direction as this is stated, just caution against expecting things to happen at, at a time that may not be reasonable for all that are involved and all the other efforts that are involved. There's also the risk you run that, and I'll just be quite open, if you don't pick the, and I put this in quotations, the right people. Look, we, let's face it, we have a trust gap in this community. Okay? I know this is an effort to try to overcome that trust gap, and it's necessary, but at some point in time, you know, this board, the community, LRSD, Pulaski County, I mean, we have to figure out how we're going to trust each other. And there will be, in this five to seven-person stakeholder group of individuals, there will be someone who is not picked. And the folks who really think they should have been picked, the trust gap remains and maybe widens. I mean, I don't know how you fix that, but I know we deal with that because you, you deal with that, you get the emails, you get the phone calls. We get the emails, we get the phone calls. Mr. Curris gets the emails, gets the phone calls. Whatever you all formulate in, in the final product of this, and we'll work our hardest to make sure it happens and gives you a product you can be proud of. But let's not create a situation where, in trying to close the trust gap, we widen the trust gap.
Okay. Ms. Savers?
I, I hear what you're saying. I agree. But I'm, I'm constantly frustrated by the inability of, of folks in this community not to be able to sit at the table because of that and do what's best for kids. And that, I keep saying this, that's our job. Our job is not to make people feel better about being included and on a committee. Our job is to provide a quality seat for every child in this state. And our specific responsibility concerning this is for Little Rock School District. So, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we can all act like adults and look at the quality of the product that emerges from this as opposed to who, who wasn't included.
Okay. We can, I think probably all thoughts and expressions have been heard relative to this, and at this time we'll ask for a motion.
I move to accept the, the proposal as written.
On 8:56, Dr. Barth has moved that it's, the proposal be accepted, and Ms. Reif has been, has given us a second. All in favor?
May I discuss her?
Discussion.
So would you be willing to make it all of Pulaski County and, and the six senators if we're going to do that? And, you know, Mr. Key is in a unique position until November in that he is the board for both Little Rock and Pulaski County. So getting those two superintendents and him together. So getting those two superintendents and him together to sort of begin to move in a direction similar to, you know, what you've put here is great right now, because after November, Pulaski County will have their own board, and I don't know how local control boards, if that will even, if they'll say, "Well, no, we don't like that," so, you know. But if we're going to give him this, if we're not going to give him freedom, and we're not going to include all of Pulaski County and let them pick the people as opposed to other people making recommendations, then I can't support it as written. But not because I think that it doesn't need to be done, but I just think that this is too specific.
The motion is not changed. Dr. Barth is consistent with his motion that he made, so at this point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Three opposed. Motion passes. Okay. I think it's time for a break.
Do you understand?
Yes, waiver thing.
Okay, we're going to reconvene and start back with A1, consideration of 2016, 2017 Arkansas Better Chance Renewal Grant Applications. Ms. McKinney.
First of all, I'd like to say my regret of the oversight of not being, okay, thank you very much. As always, we try to bring the new list of the renewal grants are the grants that have been in operation using the ABC funds as expected and also complying with the rules and regulations. So the list that you have before you is all the renewal grants, and then in the next month, we'll be coming back with possible new grant for reallocating the slots based on the number of programs who have either given slots back to the program or have even had to close for various reasons. So, but the group before you, for $100,130,200 is the renewal grants.
Any question, Ms. McKinney?
I have a question. So is it, is the number correct, 64% of the four-year-olds are in some sort of pre-K or the, either special ed, Head Start, or ABC?
They're about. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I know roughly 13% of the four-year-olds in the state are estimated to be living in poverty.
Yes.
So, do we know of the roughly 29,000 kids who are in the programs, how many of those are like half of them in poverty, or 10%, or do you have any idea? Because are we serving the majority, if not all, of the kids who are in poverty?
If you say, "Are we serving all of the kids in poverty?" I could say no, but I would say that the majority of the children in these renewal grants are the 200% of poverty.
Okay.
Because the bulk of the funding clearly specifies that children must be at, or the parents must be at 200% of the poverty line based on the federal guidelines.
Is that 44,000 for a family of four, roughly?
Roughly.
Yeah, because I know the-
Or less.
The average salary in Arkansas is like 40,000, so it really covers a wide net of kids. So I just wanted to see, I know that we're serving more kids than the number that are in poverty, and I just wanted to be sure that a lot of, if not all, or close to all of the kids in poverty are in fact being served.
I can certainly bring that information to you the next time I'm here.
Or you can just send me an email, would be perfectly fine.
I will be glad to do so.
Thank you so much.
Could you copy all of us on the email?
Pardon me?
Could you copy the rest of us on the email?
I certainly can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a quick question. So obviously, we've seen with the possibility of budget cuts, this program would be hit particularly hard by those. What would that process look like?
Well, and we have a-
We hope it, we hope it doesn't happen, but if it does happen, what would, what would that look like?
And we've already talked about that, just trying to project and make that plan just in case that does happen. We would, of course, as I said, we have 234 children who has been returned, or the slots have been returned back to the program. So, and that ends up being about $1.2 million, looking at $4,680 per child is the ABC amount. And we would certainly not look at renewing or putting that back out there for any new possible grants or for expansion. So that's one piece of it. The other thing is, we would have to look at possibly doing across-the-board cut. We also- doing across-the-board cut. We also pay contracts for professional development that's given for the ABC programs, and we would also look at doing across-the-board cut with that, so that it would still be in existence, but it would, you know, it would take a hit.
And that last piece would hit at the quality of the program?
Yes, it would hit at quality. And so, that's why if, we can't just look at reducing all the, you know, all the money from the contracts, because we don't want to do away with that piece of having that staff development, but rather than looking at all the way across the board, including services for children.
Are there, who decides or hires the leaders, like, you know, in schools, principals, and we know how critical the leader is in a school, and then the staff that they hire? Who assesses that, or how is that assessed, so we're being sure that, because we both know that the quality of the pre-K program is what's key, not having a kid go somewhere all day. So, a student, I apologize. Who, is that education that does that, or DHS that does that, or?
We have guidelines that indicates what the expectations of like a coordinator would be for the program, and so, and it would be someone with a bachelor's degree, a minimum of a bachelor's degree, with hours in early childhood or training in early childhood education. But we do, that is in the rules and regulations that has been approved by this board.
Okay. And another thing, the rent that these, the ones that aren't affiliated with the schools, the rent that they pay often in, at least in the first congressional district, I don't know about everywhere else, is often two and three times what that building would rent for if I was gonna go rent it for whatever. Who looks into those kinds of things?
We do, we analyze the, excuse me, we analyze the budget and look at it. We also work with the Department of Ed, with Mr. Burns, and also try to keep up with that information. It's not anything that the program has dictated on how much, you know, that you're limited on using this building because it costs too much.
Right.
I mean, the bottom line is, the expectation is that they are to serve children, and it's to fulfill the envi, you know, the environment's supposed to be of quality, and the teacher has to be of a certain educational capacity, and so, and the training. So, there, I mean, we look at that piece of it, and if they're able to stretch their dollars, I don't see anything excessive with that, but that is something I'll, we'll go back and look at also.
And please understand, I know you're the messenger, and I'm not shooting the messenger.
I understand.
I just want our...
But that's a great question.
Yes, yes.
It is a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, what is the board's pleasure relative to action item A1?
Move approval of the renewal grants.
Second.
Second, move by Dr. Bard, second by Ms. Dean. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A2, consideration of Arkansas Better Chance Summer Services 2016.
We expect to have funding remaining at the end of this fiscal year, probably approximately two million dollars, or a million and a half. And in the past, the Department of Human Services has taken the childcare development funds to help pay for summer services to ABC, targeting the ABC programs, so that children that are targeting, you know, we prefer four-years-of-age children being served by the summer services. However, any ABC child can participate, but it's to help with preventing summer loss, and also that one more boost before the child gets into kindergarten. And, but this year, our CCDF funds are limited. So, I would like to propose that we are allowed to use the funding that would be left at the end of the fiscal year after we make the next payment. I will be able to give more specifically the dollar figure, and even the school districts or the programs that are interested in providing the summer services, and we would like to use that funding remaining to help pay for some of the summer services for the programs that are interested in doing so.
So, that, your fiscal year ends June 30th?
Yes.
So, there's no problems with carrying those funds into the next fiscal year?
Not, no, no, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, could I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Been moved to approve by Ms. Chambers. Is there a second?
Ms. Dean.
Dean.
Okay, you, okay, it was moved by Ms. Chambers.
Moved by Dean.
Moved by Ms. Dean, I'm sorry. It says sneeze in that cut bit.
No.
And you second. Okay, Ms. Chambers, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next action item is the consideration for Durmont School District Academic Distress Quarterly Report. I think Ms. Gaethon, Ms. Ridgell, I'm sorry, keep going. Ms. Ridgell is here.
Before we start these, let me go ahead and go over your procedures that you're gonna follow for these today. And the process is gonna begin with everybody wishing to testify. Outside of attorneys, one need to be sworn in. The department will then have twenty minutes to explain the reasons why the school or district should be classified in academic distress.
This is, A5's a progress report.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, Ms. Ridgell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kristy Ridgell, and I'm the superintendent at Durmont School District, and I brought my high school principal, Mike Duncan, my curriculum coordinator, which is all these daughter, and my, and Ms. Heather Hardin, my local school improvement specialist. We at Durmont School District want to thank you for your encouragement, support, and positive feedback you have provided us throughout the year. Thank you. We at Durmont School District want to thank you for your encouragement, support, and positive feedback you have provided us throughout the year. We are continuing to move forward and make an academic improvement. In May, I will have completed fifteen hours of ed specialist program through Henderson State University. My expected completion date is May twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. I continue to collaborate readily with my mentor, Mr. Andrew Talbert. During the current year, the district has placed an emphasis on building the curriculum due to high turnover, due to high turnover in many novice teachers each year. The district felt that establishing a structure for the curriculum was needed. During the third quarter, a curriculum audit was conducted of all written curriculum in the district. Conferences were held with each teacher, and all curriculum was reviewed. Feedback was provided to the teachers on the quality of their revisions of their curriculum and the missing required components. Teachers were given timelines to make revisions and follow-up conferences are currently being held. During the third quarter, the district and buildings have begun planning for recruitment and retention of staff and students. The building principals has attended several career fairs in recent months. Prospects have been invited to visit the school and meet staff. One prospect has toured the school, observed classes, and mingled with students, while another has taught a math lesson. The district and building maintains partnerships with the local university and ERZ through attending advisory stakeholder meetings, attending the professional development, and using the university's leaders to assist us with developing a process to revise the mission and vision statement. Due to declining enrollment, the district has reinstated the softball and baseball program in hopes to retain students by promoting more of a variety of extracurricular activities. The district and building analyzed data to determine progress and identify the strengths and weaknesses. The data review includes TLI-M assessments, teacher-made assessments, and MACT aspire assessments. In comparing the achievement data from the previous year to the current year, many areas have shown improved, improvement. We have begun preparing for the 2016-17 school year by assessing our needs and determining professional development that is needed district and building-wide. We are currently in the process of registering for the school improvement conference. We are excited that Dr. Wild has invited us to present at the conference and share some of our effective leadership practices we have implemented this year. In addition, we are planning to attend the AACD conference on Teacher Excellence in July. We are very excited about the partnership we have made with Mainline Health Clinic. During the summer, renovations will be begun to construct a school-based health clinic on our campus. The clinic will open in August, and we will provide students and staff with health care. It is our hope that the clinic will reduce student and staff absence, as well as meet their health care needs. We are continuing to make progress as a district, but we are aware of the growth that is needed to change our school improvement status. We will continue to collaborate with ADE to ensure we are taking the necessary steps to make academic improvement. Thank you for your support and guidance.
Okay. Do we want to hear questions or answer questions or ask Ms. Ridgell questions now here from ADE staff? What's the pleasure of the board?
I just was wondering if you're doing any before or after-school and what your plans for summer are?
For tutoring, or?
Well, before, after-school tutoring, and then the program may be similar to what Marv LaLanne did for the students in the lower twenty-five percent in each grade.
We do have a Twenty-First Century Grant. We do offer after-school tutoring Monday through Thursday, and we do plan to offer some summer school program as well, to help out with the academic improvement.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Dean?
Madam Chair, what, what services will be provided at the health clinic?
All services, whatever they need.
Okay.
I think it's a fairly comprehensive health clinic. I know the mainline area has, they're granted based on area and poverty and remote, you know, access to health care. So, I think probably everything from a pediatrician to a dentist and everything else. I know they're doing it also in the Hamburg School District, so I think it's gonna be a comprehensive um...
And they also make referrals as well.
Right.
They refer.
But a lot of folks in that area use Mainline.
Yes.
As a health care provider, because they're not doctors, or especially with specialists on, in the area. Okay, Ms. Sabres?
Thank you for your report. It's, the longer I'm here reading improvement, school improvement reports, I think the better understanding I personally have with how hard it is to do your job, and what it, it's just like turning a big ship, right?
Yeah.
But I was reading about your classroom observations and work on the curriculum, all the things that I think are components of really creating a healthy system. Is there any one thing that you see that you're, you're really struggling with, that you, you might need extra help with?
Dean, y'all wanna address that question? I can't, I mean, recruit and retaining staff.
Yeah.
That's the big thing. We have a high turnover every year, and we have to train those people every year, like they're starting from scratch every year.
Do, and do they go to other school districts, or do they leave the profession?
They might relocate or go to other school districts, around the school districts.
Do you have Teach for America?
Yes. Well, we have Arkansas Teacher Core, but I am collaborating with Teach for America.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Dr. Bard?
So, when will you begin to know about retention for next year of faculty members?
We know now, we making those preparations to get those people hired that...
Okay. How, did, are things on the, on the staff, is next year looking a little bit better in terms of retention, or is it kind of the same?
It's less this year than it has been since I've been there.
Fewer folks are leaving?
Yes, yes.
Great, great, great. Well, that's, that's, that's a real sign of some progress, yeah.
What's your average daily attendance? We know that that's been teetering toward the danger point for a while, so how's that looking?
Teacher.
No, no, students.
Well, that's, it's pretty good. In your building?
One hundred fifty-seven, my building.
No, total, how many total?
Three seventy-two.
What?
Three seventy-two.
Three seventy-two, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Dean?
How is your parental involvement with your schools, and what are you doing?
Very low.
Okay.
But it has increased. It is increasing.
Do you have some specific plans to increase that?
Yeah, we have. We try the door-to-door.
Mm-hmm.
And that, try to get people, you know, invite to come out to the school at any time, but it kind of dropped off. So, we are making other plans.
Um, what, are you considering the time of day? Because I know that's, that's something that I've heard a lot, is it the time of day for myself as well? The time of day when PTA meetings are held, is that something that's been taken in consideration?
Yes, it is. We, most time, we have them after people get off work.
Okay.
And we also conduct surveys to get that feedback from parents.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other questions? Dr. Wild, do you have a report or comments?
Richard Wild, School Improvement Program Manager, and a few comments. Truly, if we go back a year and look at the functioning of the leadership team, they have significantly embraced the processes. So, they have developed, and even though there's been turnover in the principal position from last year to this year, the new principal coming in has embraced the process. I think that Ms. Ridgell and the district leadership team, which is for all intents and purposes, the school leadership team because of size, have really taken to heart the research behind the school improvement process. They are implementing a number of the procedures, and to a, to a degree, while they've not yet arrived, they are a shining star in terms of progress. So, we're very complimentary of the change in both attitude as well as implementation of the school improvement process. In truth, we would also recommend today that they continue with quarterly reports, but we would suggest that the quarterly reports be to the subcommittee, and that they have made enough progress that that would be adequate monitoring.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ridgell, I'd like to ask a question. I think I may know the answer, but just for the matter of record, the mentor, how has that served you as superintendent? How has, has that been an instrumental piece?
Yes, it has.
In helping you?
Yes, yes, it has.
We know that Mr. Talbert is there, we know his qualifications, but we just want to make sure that any tool that we offer you is a useful tool. So, that's, that's great, that's good to know.
Very beneficial for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Madam Chair, if I could make just a couple of remarks. There, over the last few months, you have heard assertions and accusations that somehow the department does not do enough, has not done enough to help districts that are in academic distress, or priority, or focus. And I want to point to this as a partnership that really demonstrates that the department is working, and it's a lot easier to work with folks who want the help and who accept the help. And Ms. Ridgell has embraced the assistance that, and her team. I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell on you, Ms. Harden. On my way back from a conference last year, I ran into this young lady. She was, I didn't notice she was looking at me, trying to figure out who I was, but Ms. Harden and her husband were in a restaurant that I stopped in, and we had a conversation about the, the work that she did, and she was bragging on being a student, or having Debbie Kaufman as a mentor, and, and I really got to talking to her about what she did at Durmont and how excited she was. It really came across of how excited the whole team was about the work that they were doing and looking forward to making those strong improvements. And it's, I just want to express my... And it's, uh, I, I just want to express my appreciation to you and your team, Ms. Ridgell, for embracing the, the work of Dr. Wild and his team and working with them and accepting their, uh, their advice and their counsel and the work that you do and, and with Mr. Talbert, and accepting his wisdom and counsel as well, because it is great. This is, Dr. Wild called it a shining star, and I really think that that's accurate. And I want to express, I mean, we, this is a great example of how the department and a local school district can work together to impact student performance and make things better. And I just want the board to recognize how much we appreciate their efforts.
And thank you, Ms. Ridgell. I think, well, you came, you were novice. They, you, you know, it was a little scary because you were being introduced to superintendent's job with the situation, and we do want to congratulate you in your spirit of accepting assistance and, and staying the course. I think Dermont has seen their share of, of a revolving door, and it has not stood to benefit the students and the community. So, we congratulate you, we know that they are proud to have you, and as evidenced by the work that they're doing. So, thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Now, we're down to, um, a motion to, as it relates to item A five.
I move to accept the report.
Been moved by Ms. Zook to accept.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williamson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we're down to A six, it's consideration of classification.
Does that, does that include the recommendation from Dr. Wild?
Does it, Ms. Zook, include Dr. Wild's recommendation?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
To the committee, right, okay. A six is consideration of classification of district in fiscal distress, Dollarway. And, um, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Smith, and/or.
Good morning. Cindy Smith with Fiscal Services and Support. And it is our recommendation to classify the Dollarway School District as being in fiscal distress based on a declining balance and the material audit findings.
Is there a process here?
I'm not sure if there's a process on this. I, I just, to add to what Ms. Smith said, we have been in close contact with Ms. Warren about this situation. She is aware, and, uh, just to point out that all these things, uh, I probably don't need to tell you, but the issues that caused the need for this classification were occurring prior to Ms. Warren. The audit issues that were identified may be one of the worst examples that we have seen in some time. And we've been working closely with Ms. Warren already to put steps in place to, to correct some of these things. So, just, you all know, so you all know, this is not a surprise to, uh, to Ms. Warren and her team.
There's not a specific procedure to follow in this case because the district did not appeal the classification. So, you would just need discussion and a motion. I mean, Ms. Warren is here if you want to have any questions for her.
Dr. Bar has a question.
So, I have a question. Obviously, Dollarway was taken over for academic distress. We're, we're adding fiscal distress. Is there clarity about the takeover?
We, we would ask the board add this as one of the reasons.
And so, so if, if the school, uh, if the district got out of academic distress but stayed in fiscal distress, the recommendation would be that they would remain in state control until they were out of all of the different types of distress? That's been a confusion in the past on other schools where they were taken over for one reason, other issues came to light, but then, you know, that fixed the one, the one issue.
Well, as Ms. Clay had come up, I may have misstated that based on her sign language that she was giving me, so.
Um, the, taking over the district for the fiscal distress classification is certainly an option. However, the district was not noticed that that was going to be occurring today. So, if that is something that is pursued, then we would need to do it at a later time.
And, and I did get ahead of myself. Actually, fiscal distress is one of those areas that the commissioner has the authority under statute to take action, does not have to come to the board, so.
That's correct, too. It can come either from the commissioner or the board.
So, where are we today on that?
We're just asking for the classification.
Okay. Ms. Savers?
Uh, Mr. Key, what, what is happening with the overpayment issues?
Well, the overpayment of.
To the superintendent.
Okay.
And the auditors did find that, and they have turned that over to the prosecuting attorney, and it will be taken, handled through that department.
Yeah, there, there are some of these things that once they leave legislative audit, they're really out of our hands, except for putting things in place to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And we're working on Ms. Warren on policies and procedures and practices to correct, you know, the things that, that led to some of those egregious audit findings.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So, I'm, I'm sorry for being dense on this. So, we're, we're placing them in fiscal distress. You will then make determinate, you could then make a determination that there is a takeover for fiscal distress in addition to the academic distress that, that we've already done. You're not doing that today, but you've got that option in your.
Yes, that's correct, Dr. Bar. The, the fiscal side, the commissioner has flexibility. Basically, take the same type of action you all could on academic, it rests with the board.
In terms of, um, so let's say you have taken over a district for fiscal distress. For them to be, uh, given back local control, is that done by the commissioner alone, or does that have to come through the, the board?
I think she still has that page open in the law book.
If a district's taken over for fiscal distress, the department certifies in writing that the district has met all of the criteria in their plan for classification, and then the state board removes the fiscal distress and returns them to local control. And the academic distress is also by the board.
Thank you.
And just to, to point out, the, the reasons that the board or the commissioner may want to go ahead and enact a takeover, if the academic distress was corrected, the scores came back, and there was an immediate improvement or apparent improvement, then, you know, the, I, there may not have been enough time to correct the fiscal issues. So, I'm just kind of laying that out for you all to know that those are the considerations that may need to come into play for, for that decision.
Any other questions? It was the board's pleasure, A six.
Move approval of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you'd already moved that in, or you had not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, a move approval. I move, I move that Dollarway be classed, classified in fiscal distress.
Okay. Second by Mr. Williamson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, we're down to the next item, which concerns the Dollarway District as well. Consideration of Dollarway School District Report of Progress. Uh, Ms. Warren?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I remain very cheerful and excited about the opportunity to lead Dollarway School District. As Commissioner Key mentioned, the recent, um, action to classify us in fiscal distress was not a surprise at all. And I've been aware of information related to our fiscal status for actually as long as I have been a part of the district. So, that was not a surprise, and I welcome it as an opportunity to get support and to get help. So, as I recognize you today, in the interest of time, I, my comments will be brief, and I will take an opportunity when Dr. Wild comes to meet with you as a quarterly interval on next month, and the Office of Intensive Support comes as well to provide, um, data for you and to continue with updates related to Dollarway Schools. Since last we met, we have continued to assess. We're assessing the facilities and various needs associated with them. Our fiscal needs have come to present us at the legislative audit to testify in March, and that was a very interesting opportunity to, to discuss our needs. We are working to bring any deficiencies to current. I'd like to highlight for you our stakeholder sessions I mentioned to you that we would be having. We have had stakeholder sections with all of our, generally with each of our buildings. We've held those in our, each of our buildings. We have talked with all of the teachers and all of our staff members about our district and given updates. I want to be a transparent leader, and I don't want to have a lot of surprises for anyone. I want them to understand what our status is. So, our district heard from me about our academic status, our fiscal status. We talked to them about parent engagement teams that we plan to implement a process for next year to really engage our parents. We talked about potential communication platform change. Those are areas that we know are huge and that we've been getting a lot of questions in. So, we had opportunity to go out to each of the, of the buildings, and with that particular building's families with their children literally expressed those points, given those updates, and then to pose, give them the opportunity to pose questions. We had some rich, rich conversation. And an interesting thing is, even though we were talking about some things that could perceive, could be perceived to be really negative, they were very hopeful along with me about what we can do and what we can be. And that's been something that I've been trying to convey. We are actually rebuilding a lot of relationships. There are fiscal, financial implications for relationships. When you have the types of concerns that we've had in the past, nineteen audit findings, many of them repeat findings, you've probably heard yourself in the financial community. There are relationships that you have to rebuild with that, with our academic status. Uh, of course, we have relationships that very obviously need bandaging and repairing. Interestingly enough, I am going around, really, we are going around, really, working on rebuilding and rekindling relationships throughout our schools, throughout our community, and all the way down to our children's level. We are having frequent planning sessions for the 2016-17 school year that involves our stakeholders. We have a variety of plans for the summer, and many of them include things like our summer school programs. And so excited to hear the summer A B C programming. We have had summer A B C programming in the past, and I was just asked a question about whether we'd be able to do that, and it's like, oh, that's on the agenda. So, very, very happy. That's quite a benefit. And if you don't, don't mind, I mentioned being brief, but I'd just like to make a quick comment about A B C. While we have 1,221 children enrolled in the Dollarway School District, we have 140 pre-K children that don't count in that number. And I tell you right now, I'm so excited that we are looking at not only providing the service to those A B C eligible children, but to families, children of families who don't meet the eligibility criteria. And although that's probably not that many, it doesn't feel good to know that you're only able to serve, let's say, ninety percent of the three and four-year-olds. So, we're going to look at other fund sources, N S L funds we're, you know, basically talking about, to provide those services to any age-eligible child in our district. A B C programming is phenomenally important. I benefit it not because of the eligibility on the income, of course, but special needs children. We connect them so quickly to the services that they need, and I did need those services with, with my son. So, I, I speak support for A B C. We need it. It's going to be the, an integral, integral part of really helping to prepare a child who is going to be kindergarten-ready, who may have had some things thrown, all types of things happen, we know. We don't want to make excuses, we just want to fill in some gaps. And A B C really, our pre-K program really does fill in those gaps. So excited to, to offer that to all of the children in our district. We're in the process of major curriculum assessments and considerations for some major pieces. We have some, some gaps that we have identified, and we'll share more with, more about that with you and our planning toward, working toward that. I am, um, moving toward talking about simplicity, simplicity. There are so many things that our teachers have to deal with and to do every day. And, and they should, we should, we should be responsible. But all the initiatives and all of the different components and the different pieces. So, we have an opportunity to really remodel Dollarway School District. We have an opportunity, and by the way, we're going to take that opportunity. One of the conversations I had with families, and I'm comfortable having the conversation with you because I've talked to the district about this, fiscal distress, that, that's, that's quite a, quite a, quite a title to, to wear. But we're going to take this opportunity to, like I said, remodel. We have got to operate with greater efficiency anyway because we're to be good stewards, and that's one of the things I identified, um, our next steps to be. Just, we're just going to be good stewards, we're going to be better stewards. So, we focused a lot about facilities and also about our workforce. I ditto what Ms. Ridgell said. Recruitment and retention are major, major issues. We have some wonderful teachers, but we also have some classrooms that are not taught right now by highly qualified teachers. We have long-term subs in some cases. And so, when people stay, they stay, and they do a really good job. But we've had so much turnover from the top down that it has a major impact on just how well we can do what we do. So, that's something we're going to work a great deal on. Our efficiency, uh, when it comes to our use of our funds and also how we place our force is going to be very important. And that's a lot of where our time is spent right now, um, as we prepare for 2016-17. Many things I could say, I am going to, I did heed, um, the, the request for data. Please understand that we are emerging in these first few months to have a better understanding of what our data says. And I want to make certain that we present to you clean data, and that you will see as I will join the quarterly report timeline next month. I'll be here, I'm always going to be here, Lord willing, when Dollarway's name is called. And so, our name will be called next year and, uh, next month, and I'll have more information for you then as well.
Throatians, Ms. Zook.
Are you a member of a co-op? And do, if so, do they give you the support service that, uh, for your pre-K programs?
I have been asked the perfect questions everywhere I go. Every building, a parent or a child, or somebody would ask me a perfect question. Yes, ma'am, we are part of a cooperative. As a matter of fact, it was the cooperative that I was director of before I came here, Arkansas River Education Service Cooperative. In a Zoom meeting we had, it's a collaborative meeting, O I S, A D E unit partners and our district leaders come to, we realized we, we haven't done something because we're moving so fast, there's so much to do. Normally, the co-op would sit down with a district at the beginning of the year and talk about all the services and line out everything that you need to do. But we haven't had that time. And I'm like an old co-op person, and I've not taken advantage of that yet. But we talked about how there's, there's a gap. Yes, they do provide services to us. As a matter of fact, when we can't afford certain pieces and components, they are there. Um, and sometimes they're knocking on the door, and Dollarway hasn't always been answering. But we're changing that, we're going to change that. Yes, there are a variety of services. Dollarway's participated in all the services from the early childhood special education services, hippie, uh, parents as teachers, of course, is in the area, special, professional development, like, yes, ma'am. They provide services, and we're trying to organize better to, to receive and accept the services better.
Any other questions? Ms. Savers?
Love your enthusiasm. Um, how, how's discipline?
So, I, I, we are gathering data, um, and I'm sorry I'm saying that and not showing you data, but you'll see it next month. We've actually pulled a great deal of data. Discipline overall is much better than I think some people would think. We don't have huge numbers of major incidents, like I think the perceptions could be. But what we are seeing our data say is that we have a, a high number of, um, lower-grade discipline infractions that we're dealing with in a maybe, maybe an overly punitive way. We have some younger ones who are, you know, having some suspensions. And, um, and I know we're thinking, you know, kindergarten, first grader, second grade students, there may be some, some time that we need to do that. But I'm just thinking, we can do better. So, yes, we, we overall really aren't so poor, but I'll, I'll share data with you. So yes, we, we overall really aren't so poor, but I'll, I'll share data with you. However, we are having more opportunity to do much more punitive things with children. And it's because we don't have as many services in place as we need to have. There are some behavior modification interventions that we're not taking advantage of. Some services even in our backyard that we haven't learned as much as we need to about. So we're going to look toward professional development for that. And then also, you know, calling in the behavior specialist that's right at our back door to provide other support as well. We look at the behavior functioning pieces. We have not really fully implemented what we should on a student-by-student basis. So there are many opportunities for us to help improve our discipline with just very efficiency, I say, and use of, of services on that behalf.
Well, and I know you're aware, there, there are several models out there that are working in schools like yours. And I'm sure you could get some resources, folks, in to consult with you on that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, I wanna echo my colleague's comments about my gratitude for your optimistic attitude. I, I think that has to be said. It's too often in these turnaround situations where people come in with a deficit mindset and you're obviously coming in with an asset mindset. And I just have to say how completely refreshing that is. And it is toward that note that I, I just say, and I know this is early on in the process, and it's evident that your leadership is strong. I just hope that you can build a leadership team around you so that it doesn't all center around you and this is something that's infiltrated, not just within the schools, but within the families as well. But so, so hopeful from what, what you're saying. I feel the hope. So thank you.
Absolutely. If I may, just a quick comment. I, I do realize sometimes I'm, I'm saying I this and I that. And I, I'm listening to myself and will probably, you know, spank myself a little later for that. But, but it's been very important to say to the district that the voice of leadership cares about what happens here. And that the voice of leadership is capable and stands ready to do the work and has a plan to be here to accomplish it. But yes, ma'am, we've not only had turnover at the superintendent's level, but also at the building principal level. And so absolutely, we, we've got to pull that in and it has to, we have to build capacity because of course I can't do it all and none of us can alone. So I, I accept and understand and absolutely, that's part of our work as well. Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Thank you for your report. And thank you, I just wanna echo as well. You are bubbly and effervescent.
Every day.
And it is quite refreshing. Just to piggyback off of those other questions, you spoke about speaking with the families and the, the cooperation of leaders. What sort of partnership do you have with your parents in the community? How is your PTA membership, how is that looking as far as parent participation?
I'm learning more about our structure. Each of our buildings do it in different ways. And we're doing a better job in some buildings than we are in others. For instance, it's very clear, we communicate very clearly in our Townsend Park campus. And, and this is something they will have heard before. Not to say good things aren't happening everywhere, but they're a really good example. It's really, really clear just what you need to be engaged in as a parent. It's very clear what activities are going to be moving forward. We're seeing a use of technology that really benefits getting the word out and communicating. That can happen everywhere. But we have not really structured our parent engagement teams or our parent engagement, parent engagement processes to make certain that we get the, the bang for the buck. Our parents are there though. And they're waiting to know exactly what to do. And we've gotta do a better job in that area. However, we do have the challenges that I think all districts have. Where secondary parental involvement is not quite as high. And of course, your parents are really, really there as they're younger and younger. But we have work to do to do a better job of engaging.
Do you have a parent coordinator at each school?
We do. We sure do. I, I'm looking toward, and we've had a lot of discussions about a district-level parent center or parent. That, that's a component that we don't have right now. We don't exercise as we could. And, and that will bring great dividends for able to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, just one request and recommendation that I would make. In your motion of accepting this report, I would ask that y'all consider putting Dalloway on a quarterly report rather than bimonthly. And so Ms. Warren could get on the same schedule with the academic distress and would keep her in her district more often and in our boardroom less often. And I think, I think I'm comfortable, just to tell y'all what gives us comfort. We went to Dalloway. We took our show on the road with the department last month. And as, as part of our effort to get better at helping guide districts and assist districts and walk beside them, went and met with her leadership team, went over those areas of academic, all the aspects of academic, the fiscal issues, legal issues, working with them. And we feel very confident that Ms. Warren has them on the right track. And we, we believe a quarterly report to you all would be sufficient to give you what you need moving forward.
In light of that, is there some reason we're not doing that with the Little Rock School District too?
I think that you all took action specifically. You asked for monthly updates there. I mean, at, at any point that you all wanted to, to change that, you, you can do that. In this case, Little Rock was a different case, I think. I think we all agree with that. So I'll leave that to you all to decide how you wanna change it. But this would be my recommendation for Dalloway.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one comment. I'm very excited about your report. You know, nobody comes, and I dis- issue this disclaimer, I believe everything you're saying, but nobody comes and say, and says to us, you know, it's bleak and I'm doing a terrible job. I don't anticipate change, but we are excited. But I know you understand your situation is that your undermagnifying glass has been multiplied many, many times. So I, you know, it, you know, it might as you to seek and accept the support of the department and their support staff. So thank you. And certainly, this could be a model for permanent turnaround. And, and we owe that, the least of that to the students and the young people and families in, in the Dalloway District. So thank you. And so when you get to feeling low and need a shot of adrenaline or encouragement, call Commissioner Key. Thank you.
Actually, I already do.
She does.
So is it, what's the pleasure of the board? Ms. Dean?
I move to accept the report and to move them to quarterly reports from Dalloway.
Moved by Ms. Dean, there are second, second by Mr. Wilson, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next action item is gonna be presented by Ms. Barnes, consideration of academic distress bill for Hope High School.
Ms. Barnes?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Annette Barnes, Assistant Commissioner for Public School Accountability. I'm here on behalf of the department to ask for consideration of the academic distress appeal by Hope High School. Prior to going into this action item, Mrs. Clay will advise the board on the steps and the actions. And I have Dr. Denise Arrola with me, who will be presenting on part of the department. And I also have Mr. Louis Farren in the School Performance Unit.
Madam Chair, if we may, before we proceed with this appeal, there was a person that signed up for public comment on the Dalloway item. I don't know if we didn't get that sign-in sheet to you, but if you would like to...
I don't have it, no.
It's Ms. Bryant? It's Ms. Annie Bryant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. I'm sorry, I overlooked it. I'm sorry for oversight, Ms. Bryant.
It's fine. Thank you. My name is Annie Bryant and I am a parent from Dalloway School District. And first of all, I wanna thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Keys for appointing Ms. Warren as our superintendent. She is doing an outstanding job. Overall, the parent and the staff that, that I've talked to, we're, she, they're very positive about the direction that the district is going in right now. Basically, we support and understand the benefit of the restructuring that she's talking about doing because our, our enrollment has dropped significantly since the beginning of the school year. And really, the big concern that, that we have in our district right now as parents is that we're gonna be moving our children and leaving our high school area. That's the proposal that they're saying, we're gonna have to move out the high school area. And we don't want charter schools to move into our buildings. And so what we're looking at is utilizing those buildings for, like what Ms. Warren said, for like a parent's center, because we've never had a district-level parent's center. So that we can have, right now, at our high school, we don't have an alternative learning environment. So our buildings can be used for alternative learning environments. We also need like math and literacy center because we're having problems with math and literacy. So we need those buildings for things like that. We can also use those buildings for like job training and GED training and career readiness and things like that to help parents and, and children that over years in our districts have not been receiving the, the education that they needed. We can use those areas for things like that. And also social services because a lot of the children in our area, you know, with the behavior issues and things like that are going on, that we know we need to have additional services to, to help them so that we can work on their behavior. And so I just wanna make sure that when we restructure our schools, that those things are, are thought about instead of, you know, because we have Quest there and we have the lighthouse, you know. But we have things that we can use those buildings for right there at Dalloway. You know, those buildings are important to us. Also, our parents, Ms., the school district has started to talk to us, but we need a little more engagement from the superintendent, okay? Because we're not, they're not collaborating so much. It's kinda like decisions are made and then it kinda trickles down and we hear about it. So maybe if we can be included in the decision-making a little more, it may be a little better. Because generally, research shows that if you're included in it, then you are a little more supportive and you kinda go for it a little more. And so I think that if they include us a little more, then we will work a little harder to make it better. But I really believe that Dalloway School District can be a model for what happens when you come in, you take over, you put in the work, you include those people in the changing process. And we could be a model that people wanna emulate and they wanna be like us. Because it doesn't take a lot of money in order to educate a child. We don't have to have all those resources necessarily money-wise. It takes heart. It takes hard work. And we can turn them, turn this school around. And I wanna thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. And I wanna thank you for looking for somebody who has heart and tell you how much we really, really do appreciate it. And I wanna thank Ms. Zook for talking about that program about child advocacy because I'm gonna go and talk to Ms. Warren about that and see if we can implement that in Dalloway. Y'all have a good day.
Well, before you leave, Ms. Bryant, we want to acknowledge and recognize your advocacy over the several months. And we appreciate, we appreciate your spirit. And I charge you, as you are charging Ms. Warren, to help the Dalloway District with the parent engagement. I know that you're pivotal, one of the pivotal pieces in that. So your responsibility, as I see it, will be able, be able to assist her in boosting that because I know a lot of people listen to you and, and that she may need your voice in that area. So we're counting on you to make sure that that piece turns around. And I think as you, as you empower parents in the process, a lot of the things that you're talking about, talking about will happen as a result of it. So again, thank you and we appreciate your voice. You, even though you point out some things that are not complimentary, you're always encouraged and positive about turning things around. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Okay. I'm Kendra Clay, General Counsel for the Department of Education. And I'm going to go over the hearing procedures for the academic distress appeals. You do not have formal procedures adopted and rules, but I will tell you what your past practice has been and recommend that you follow that same procedure today. All persons with the exception of attorneys need to be sworn in. The department will have twenty minutes to prevent, present information on why the school or district is being recommended for classification as being in academic distress. And then the school or district will have twenty minutes to present its position on why it should not be classified as being in academic distress. After that, the board will take time to ask questions and discussion and you will vote on the matter. Before we, before I turn it over to Dr. Arrola, who will have much better information than I do. On the Hope appeal, there is something that I want to draw your attention to. In their appeal, they allege that the ADE rules, ACTAP rules were not followed. And that assertion is just not correct. Dr. Arrola will go into more details on how the Concordant Cut Score complies with Section 3.02.2.1. That is the forty-nine point five percent or less of students that achieve proficient or advanced threshold for classifying a school in academic distress. But those rules were followed. There's a portion of the rules that's brought up in Hope's appeals that talks about the department shall reestablish the thresholds after Park becomes fully operational. And I think with the, the changes that we've seen in the assessment system over the past year, it's fair to say that Park never really became fully operational. So over the next few years, or next, I guess, two years after this one, there'll be some transition and as we transition into ACT Aspire. So the, the assertion that 3.02.3 required immediate change to the rules is just not accurate. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think you probably wanna hear from Dr. Arrola and Ms. Barnes. Mr. Farren's also here. They've got information on the Concordant Cut Score, the classification and specific information on each district, which in this case, this appeal is Hope.
So we invite the department to come and start the presentation in whatever order?
Yes, and we'll need to, we'll need to swear the department staff in. Yes, everybody but attorneys. You probably need to swear attorneys in.
All those that intend to testify in the action item, A, eight, please stand and raise your right hands to be sworn. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Well, I think it's, it's been probably two months since I stood before you and talked about the concording of the scores and presented to you the methodology behind the concording of the scores.
Would you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Denise Arrola. And I'm with the Office of Innovation for Education at the University of Arkansas. And it was two months ago that I presented to you a short presentation on what needed to be done to concord scores in order for the rule to be followed, which establishes that cut point for the proportion of students that are below that proficient cut, given the same rigor as the ACTAP for the prior two years. And so all of that information has been presented to you in terms of that methodology. In addition, we answered questions relative to concerns that were raised at the time. The information that I, that I have today is just information that's relative to the specifics of the performance score that the school earned, given the Concordant Cut. And then also, I can answer questions about... And then also, I can answer questions about any other public information that's available about the school performance, should you ask. But the school had scored using the Concordant Scores. In other words, using the cut points that were deemed to be comparable for identifying the same proportion of students. This particular school had a three-year score of 47.362. And that information was using the cut point, the concording score. Now, the actual score for the students on the Park exam, if we were not using the concording score, the school would have a percent of students meeting the levels for college and career readiness as established by Park or as established by NICSIC for the students who took the alternate assessment. The percent of students meeting those college and career-ready standards was 9.7 in literacy and 2.8 in math. So you can see where the concording, where taking the information about the assessment and linking those scores so that they're comparable, how that does provide that comparativeness across the same level of rigor as what was used to establish the original cut point. That's the information that I have for you, but I am, if you have other questions, relative to this particular appeal, I'm available to answer those as well.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Savers?
Personally, I just want to be sure that any decision that we make is a fair decision based on the information, and I trust you. And if you tell me that this is fair.
Well, and let me, so the question that was raised a couple of months ago was about, how comfortable are you that in this concordance, that you're not dealing with people falling just above the line or just below the line in terms of error in some way, shape, or form? And I think that's part of what I hear in your question as well. So I will share with you what a friend and colleague shared with me regarding that. And really, we worry about three sources of error. We worry about measurement error, which is inherent in the assessment, and it's inherent around the cut points where we establish whether or not a student is above, below, or at a cut point. There's sampling error, and I'll explain why that is not an issue here. And then finally, there's year-to-year variation. So when we look at error of measurement, in classical test theory, we think about how students have a true score. And it's a score that's out there that we don't always, we don't get to measure it, but what we're doing when we establish a score for a student is we're trying to estimate what the true score is for that student. And what we end up with is what's called an observed score. And you have a number of kids that are overestimated and a number of kids who are underestimated. And across the group, it balances out to zero, right? So you're always going to have a few above who could have fallen below and a few below who could have fallen above, but in the end, it becomes a net zero. So in terms of error of measurement, when you're dealing with a group proportion like this, you are accounting for that in the largeness of the group size. And in the case of this school, over three years, we're talking about 1,500 kids who are in that final statistic that you're working with. So that's a pretty stable number in terms of making sure you have that balance. Then it leaves us with sampling error. Well, this isn't really about sampling. This is the actual population across the state and the actual population in the school. So that's a moot point in terms of concerns about error. And the last thing that could introduce error is year-to-year stability. And that was one of the reasons originally for using three years of data. It was also one of the reasons for the tax decision not to change the rule, but to find a way to identify a similar proportion or a comparable proportion of students by using the concordance. And when you're talking about the year-to-year stability, that three-year of information that includes across those 1,500 or more students, that's what gives you that higher confidence that you've got a number that you can have confidence in. Does that?
Yes.
Do you have any further questions for Dr. Arrola? Thank you.
You're welcome. Credit to Dr. Win-Win, who watches these and shares wonderful information, so.
No further questions.
Okay.
There's someone here representing the HOPE District would like to speak at this time. Could you come forward, please, and identify yourself and your title?
I'm Bobby Hart, I'm Superintendent of Hope Public Schools, Hope, Arkansas.
H-A-R-T?
H-A-R-T, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I want to thank the Chair and the Board and Commissioner Keith for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm not here to defend our performance levels, not at all. We're not here to argue the performance. Our kids and our teachers scored what they scored, and we knew that there were going to be substantial dips in the data going into Park testing. Our contention is that there's some technical issues that we just feel like, I guess I'm the elected messenger for a lot of folks, that a lot of ways that this Concordant Report was conducted and accountability was put on us seems a bit unfair. When you figure in the fact that in the 1314 school year, and I've got some slides that you should have access to, I don't know if they're available just yet. They were working earlier this morning. You can see there, three years' worth of trend data that's combined literacy and math at the high school over a three-year period before. Dr. Arrola laid out for you the cold, hard facts that if we use just the combined numbers, they would be substant, the combined number, and you didn't mention it, but I will for transparency's sake, I think I figured it correctly, it would be about 38.5% if you combined in a regular without the Concordance Report.
Oh, of course.
That's my moron math, so. You know, I have the distinct honor of following Ms. Warren, Ms. Bryant, and I'm the least pleasant of all these people that have become before you to look at, so please overlook that. But in 1314, if you'll look at, and a basis for our appeal, 1314, the benchmarks exams were not aligned to state curriculum frameworks. We were teaching the Common Core, but we were tested over using the benchmark frameworks. Our contention is that in Section 3.11 of the ACTAP rules, that the assessment and the curriculum should match, should be concurrent. A second point there in Section 6.0, and it seems somewhat trivial, but if you, when you really stop and look at it, "The board shall establish four performance levels for each criterion reference assessment administered as part of ACTAP." You're aware of the five performance levels. ACTAP rules call for four, and to our knowledge, those rules were never revised to accommodate the change. 3.02.3 of ACTAP rules, I'll have Mr. Tripp Walter with APSRC address that issue later as Ms. Barnes brought that to your attention. Our understanding is that the ADE shall establish, reestablish thresholds of ACTAP rules when Park assessment becomes fully operational. It is our opinion that once you give the test, that it is fully operational, and those scores should have been, should have been reestablished, or those thresholds should have been reestablished. Give you a little bit of a timeline that is a little bit concerning, and I'm not, by no means am I pointing fingers at anyone. I understand leadership, and I understand how hard it is to move organizations. November 15th, Park scores were released by the department. In Section 10 dot 4 dot 2, "Academic distress identification letters must be sent to the district within 30 days of the release of state assessment scores by the ADE." Hope School District was sent a letter January 27th by the ADE identifying us of academic distress way outside of that 30-day release period. Again, not here to say that we did outstanding on the exam, I just don't feel like full support and full transparency occurred. Secondly, the Concordance Report that you all saw, or that Dr. Arrola referred to, it's a regulatory document, which contains the Park's cut scores used to determine academic distress. It wasn't submitted to the State Board until February the 11th. We received our letter January 27th notifying us of academic distress. If the report was viewed by you all and seen as a regulatory document, and then we received it, I think I could swallow this pill a lot easier. But we were notified before you all had even had final opportunity to view the report. We've got a couple of supporting documents, if you'll remember. Anytime we've changed testing modes in the state, and I've been in this business in education for right at 22 years, and 12 of them, yeah, 12 of them as an administrator. Anytime we've changed testing modes or testing procedures, there has always been a whole harmless period where schools and districts weren't held in contempt for first year of test scores. Usually, those are sets for baseline numbers. Well, we feel like we're the only state that tested in Park that is now, that is now trying to use those test scores in year one of Park for accountability purposes. To me, that's something of a troubling fact. But if you look here, because Arkansas, this is from the Bureau brief by the Bureau of Legislative Research, November of 15. "Because Arkansas changed its state assessments from the Arkansas benchmarks to Park in 2014-15," Bureau states, "it is not possible to accurately compare recent performance or growth in achievement." And it goes on to discuss that furthermore, it may take several more years to be able to compare Arkansas students' performance on the ACT Aspire with those of many other states. We don't have three years of consistent data. I understand and I respect the work that Dr. Arrola has done. Again, her methodology, I don't dispute that. But I think the method and the way we're trying to enforce is where our, as a district and as a school system, our issues exist. Also, from the Bureau of Legislative Research, "Due to change in state assessments, Arkansas students' scores on the Park for 2014-15 are not comparable to those of previous benchmark exams." This is from our Bureau of Legislative Research. It's two different tests across two different grade spans. When you talk about math, or excuse me, ELA, you had been testing 11th graders, then you're testing 9th and 10th graders, two completely different testing models. Those scores aren't comparable. And I realize through statistics, you can compare and make things look a certain way. I understand that. But I think in reality, which is where we try to operate with our students and our faculty members, it's not a really fair way to judge this. We haven't, we've been proactive. Once we got those scores in mid-November, we didn't wait until we had academic distress notification. We started quite, you know, right away. We knew we had some instructional issues. Matter of fact, I've been in the district four years. When I took the job, the high school was in year six of school improvement. So it's just not a foreign territory. But thanks to the waiver pieces and such as that, the year six school improvement went away. Now then, we're in that academic distress hole again. We have, and I've listed in my letter there, and I won't bore the committee with, by reading that, but I think that we have some action items in place to increase and improve our instructional practice. We, I echo Ms. Warren and others' comments, it's difficult, districts that mirror us demographically. 80% free and reduced lunch, South Arkansas, it's difficult to maintain and recruit fully qualified, highly qualified staff. We are in the process of replacing a high school principal at this time. We do have some good, some quality candidates that we're excited about, and hopefully our board will, or we should as a board, approve those recommendations in Monday's meeting. But as far as teaching faculty goes, you know, we struggle. And we're trying to be as resourceful and do the things that we can do, but people aren't there. And that's a, that's a roadblock. Not to make, not to mean that's an excuse at all, but anyway, I don't want to take too much of your time. What I do is hit back on the things that we feel like are important in regard to, and you can read those for yourselves there, but we feel like we're trying to be proactive and raise student achievement levels. We just feel like at this time, it's not fair for ourselves or anyone in the state to be held accountable at this level for the Park scores. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Hart?
So I appreciate your presentation and your lack of defensiveness. I appreciate your demeanor today. I do have a question. So for the three, the last three years of the old state assessment, y'all were in the mid-'50s, right? And as you say, you dropped well below. And you're, I mean, you're right, the misalignment between the old test and the standards, but Park was, is aligned to the standards. And does that suggest to me that your high school had gotten pretty good at teaching to the old test? And thus it, it's, when actually faced with an exam that actually was tied to the standards, which had been in place for a number of years, that y'all, y'all dropped?
Dropped.
And I'm not saying that was a bad strategy, if you wanted to stay out of academic distress, but it's not a sustainable strategy because you knew all along that a new, an exam was going to come online that was tied to the standards. So would you respond to that?
Yeah, I think what, and what our data indicates to us clearly is that we have a curriculum and instruction issue. Number one, our curriculum had not in this year been aligned to the depth of knowledge and the rig, and the level of rigor required to be successful on the Park. That is not only a student issue, but it's also a teacher issue. Instructionally, we didn't teach to the level of rigor and demand that it was required for success. We realized that, that was in the first disaggregation piece, that, you know, there's no way we could have performed this poorly if the curriculum and instruction had been aligned. What we've basically done, as Park has done, is, you know, we'd been clearing a five-foot bar. It's not a great jump, but it's, you know, it was, it's the bar we were clearing. And in a year's time, we've been asked to clear a seven-foot bar. That's a world-class bar. And instructionally and student-wise, we weren't ready to clear that bar. If you'll remember, when we made the transition, everyone realized that there would be some gaps in two to three classes of students where they had been, hadn't been exposed to Park-level depth for a number of years. It had been only two years in the high school before the test is taken. So I think there's, that's a, to me, that's a big point, is our students hadn't been prepared all the way through school as, at that depth of knowledge. And our faculties, our faculty was not prepared to teach them at that level of knowledge. I don't know if that answers your question, Dr. Warren?
It does. It does. It also sounds like a form of academic distress. I mean, in terms of things not clicking on these, on these new standards. And I think, I think we would all be more sympathetic if the standards in the test had just kind of come out of nowhere and hit districts, you know, at the last minute. But, you know, we all know that the standards had been, been in place for, well before I came on the State Board.
Well, not at all grade levels.
Not at all grade levels, but we all know that there was.
It was coming.
It was coming, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
A couple of things. I don't even know, I'll ask the ADE in a minute, but I don't know if you had used your three previous years plus this one. So it becomes a fourth of the average as opposed to a third of the average, if that would have made a difference. I didn't sit down and do the numbers. But I think another thing that we all have to realize is, over 50% of the schools that are in academic distress are high schools. And I have a niece who teaches in another state in a high school. And one of the things that is a true challenge regardless of the school is getting the kids to take it seriously. You know, they have all sorts of excuses, and they talk about it on the bus and at the playground and at the, you know, in the cafes and all of this. So, you know, that in fact is a challenge. And I know different principals are doing things like, you know, getting up for the test and, you know, with little kids, it's a gumdrop, you know, this is, oh, great. is, oh, great, I'll get one at the end if I do well or if I pay attention. But I, to, so you will understand, I do understand that motivating high school kids to perform at their best on a standardized test in fact is a challenge and one that in, in turn influences the, and reflects on the school.
If I may speak to that, as part of our, our plan of action, we interviewed students. And, and our instructional facilitators at the high school came to me and, and said, reason kids didn't do, one of the reasons, they didn't feel like it had any merit or any bearing. If you'll remember, at the time of the test, there was considerable turmoil throughout the state as to what was going to be tested, what was going to be kept, not just in our district, but in many other districts. Anecdotally, I don't have any data to back this up, but there were numerous teachers, parents, and other folks said, don't worry about this. This is going to go away. And so I think that immediately kind of damaged the validity of, of what you were going to get in return. You're right. It is extremely difficult to, to motivate not just a high school student, but students in general when they're what, the only, you know, the only people accountable to you all, they're standing in front of you right now. Not blaming the kids. We've got to put measures in place to fix that and to do better, but that's part of the problem.
Mr. Savers?
Mr. Hart, what's your graduation rate?
Seventy-eight percent.
Okay. And how would you characterize performance at the high school currently? I mean, just aside from all the other stuff, what, what would you say?
It, it, teachers are doing the best they know how. And we have tried professionally to develop staff and to unpack standards. And we're continuing to try to coach our staffs. You know, we could, we could remove all the staff, but we would have to replace them with somebody. So we might as well coach the kids we have, you know. So we're trying our best to, to, to coach those staff members up. The mood, as far as the kids go, it's, it's a learning environment where kids want to be, I think. But there's so many issues outside the classroom that we don't have any control over. I mean, I'm not using poverty as an excuse, but we're 83% free and reduced lunch. And, and there's some issues that come with that, that, you know, it's hard to overcome. You asked about discipline earlier with one of the previous districts. You know, we've taken the approach, it's kind of hard to teach kids when you suspend them. And, but sometimes you have to. I under, you know, I understand. But it's, it's really difficult to graduate them when you expel them. Occasionally, you have to. So, you know, we have a lot of good things going on at the high school. You know, our kids, robotics teams and just, you know, it's like everybody else. We're doing the best we can with, with the resources we have available. I don't know if I'm answering your question clear, but I think the instructional practice needs to improve. And if, if you all deem the need for academic distress, we will gladly welcome the supports. We're not running from, from the academic problems. I don't, I don't want anybody to confuse my presence here today as, as, you know, crying me a cup, but we're, we're, you know, we're not responsible. We've got to fix some instructional issues.
Would that be, would that be assisted by the, the
Designation?
Status of academic distress, if you, you know, when you, you brought that up?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm curious to understand if, you know, if you're teetering on, you know, whether you're in or out.
Right.
And the balance is so delicate and can be interpreted on one way or the other by different parties. Would it be to the benefit? Certainly, it wouldn't be something you would embrace. But would you benefit from the, from the assistance that academic distress designation brings?
Quality help at any level is never going to be rejected. We would embrace the process. We would welcome the opportunity to improve. We wouldn't run from it, and we wouldn't resist the opportunities that it might provide. I'm, you know, I hope that answers your question, Madam Chairman.
I think probably as well as you can.
Well, I, I just, I understand. Well, you know, hope is just like many other communities throughout our, our state, that it's seen a population loss, it's seen job loss, it's seen a whole lot of issues. And when you label another school as being academically distressed or focus or priority, that continues that downward spiral and of, you're, you're only servicing and teaching the weakest of the weak, the poorest of the poor sometimes, and, and.
Well, you know, you could look, look at it like you have a low-grade fever.
That's right.
And, and you could use some intervention and hope, but you don't, and it may get worse.
And I understand.
Any other questions, Miss Ding?
You just kind of pulled out the point that I wanted to make, because you, you made the point earlier, you made the statement, our teachers are doing the best they know. Well, you can only do the best that you know. So if you're peeking out at what you know, then that's an opportunity instead of seeing it in a negative light, see it as a positive for an opportunity for the, for your teachers to get more information, to get that support so that they can know better, so that they can help the students do better, so that you can have that hand up to pull you up over that spot of teetering to stabilize you.
I would ask Mr. Walter if he could address the legal specifications in 3.02.4, if you all.
And I, I think that's good, because I, my next question was going to be to the department staff to address the issues of challenge that you bring to the argument. So I think Mr. Walters would be appropriate this time. And then after that, then the staff could address specifically what he's saying in addition to what you brought, what you noted as your disagreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Commissioner Keen. My name is Trip Walter. I'm a staff attorney with the Arkansas Public School Resource Center. I just wanted to make a, a couple of comments briefly. One is not a strict legal point, but if you'll allow me some indulgence here of, I won't speak for Superintendent Hart, but I, but I think I want to make one thing very clear. Hope is bringing the appeal because it does not believe it ought to be placed in academic distress, or I should say classified as an academic distress. So again, I don't want to speak for or contradict what Superintendent Hart said. Obviously, at all times, Hope welcomes the assistance, advice, and guidance of the department, but it does reject, if you will, the imposition of the academic distress label. Okay? And, and with all respect, obviously, that's your call to make. But, but I think, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. On the technical points, if you will, the compliance points that Ms. Clay addressed earlier, as you see, Mr. Hart has covered many of those, if not all those, in his, in his presentation. And I will not get too deep in the weeds here, so to speak. Certainly will be glad to respond to any questions. As a whole, the district felt that all of those were appropriate and important to include. And, and I would ask that as part of your deliberation here, you do give that due concern. Understand, obviously, that as, as Mr. Hart has said, the data is what the data is. But I think these are, there are important procedural issues here that go to the, and process issues that go to the heart of the matter as to whether you have the ability or can classify the district, or the high school rather, as an academic distress. Specifically and briefly, I'd just like to camp out for a moment on the 3.02.3 issue. Of, that is, that is quite important, and I believe you've heard Ms. Clay indicate that, well, when are the Park assessments fully operational? I think Mr. Hart, Superintendent Hart hit on this himself a few minutes ago. I think it's hard to argue that they're not operate, they're not fully operational now. I mean, the department has utilized those to identify the, the high school. And the, the district stands before you here today, hoping to avoid the classification label of academic distress based largely upon that. And I think it's pretty clear that they're operational. I, I disagree that, that this process doesn't require, so to speak, immediate compliance on the departed, the department. The department and now you are taking regulatory action here against the district, which obviously has some serious, serious consequences. So we think this is a serious matter. We don't think it was complied with as the other things we mentioned, but especially here, and especially as it's been already raised. I would just beseech this board to, to really look into this matter and make sure that the process and procedures that are required for you to classify the high schools as in academic distress have been, have been fulfilled with to your satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Walter? Okay. Thank you. Dr. Rola or Ms. Warren, do you guys want to come back and, and do a summary or rebuttal or challenge?
Summary, rebuttal, challenge, no. Do want to appreciate Superintendent Hart for coming before the board and appreciate Mr. Walter and the information that they have discussed. For me, I'm going to simply identify that if this board will remember, not all the members currently were here at the time, but we did have a work session and we did discuss various reasons that we are going to have to find a way to address the needs of students. And we knew that we did not get a pause on our state accountability. Therefore, we considered many things. We worked with our technical advisory committee on accountability. And ultimately, it was decided in order to protect this board that we would need a method to address where schools would, would actually be showing performance so that it could be mapped across three years. So there are a number of other issues that have come into, into play here as well. Dr. Rola did talk about the data, and she has some additional information to address some of the concerns that have been raised before you. As far as the notifications and whether or not we are in compliance with the timelines, we are. Districts received their initial information on their data in November, and that is true. But it was preliminary data. It was not published, meaning it had gone through corrections periods so that districts could dispute what was and what was not, and whether or not those, that data would then be used as a part of the classification or designation, the criteria. So the department, because the data did come back late, later than, than usual, we had to meet some federal reporting. So we gave a window. Commissioner's memo went out. The corrections portal was open. The districts had the opportunity to do it. However, the data was not the best in our minds because we felt that many people did not understand how critical this data would be. So the department then opened a second window after we met the federal guidelines in order to allow districts to complete that process. We did that. And then when we closed the window, the corrections that we were able to encourage people to do, because we need accurate data, was in January. The data was published January 26, which is when it was actually official data. That was after both corrections periods. And we sent out the letters of those who met the criteria the following day. So we did keep this board in, in compliance with the timeline. We stayed within compliance with timelines. There was a comment regarding imposition of labels. And I am not here to, to become emotional or passionate, but I am here to state, we recognize that negative labels are not always good publicity. But we also recognize that when we see scores the way that we see scores, and we see performance of students, and that it has already been pointed out that this data has allowed the district to do some introspection and look at where their teachers may have been teaching to a test and not to a standard, then we, we have, we have to still address these rules as they are, and then the assistance that we are required to provide with respect to whatever the, the decision of this board is regarding that. But imposition does not meet the needs of our students when it comes to the performance and whether or not we're growing. So Dr. Rola can address the remaining questions with respect to whether or not assessments are fully operational. As Superintendent Hart stated, those high school teachers did have two years prior to the assessment. And I do understand the rest of it, but the whole state was facing the exact same issues as, as Mr. Hart stated. Secondly, there are some additional pieces of information that the district has been aware of and has been made aware of. And we have, we have put as much transparency out as possible. We have data. We have videos and explanations on our website that will also speak to some of the poverty issues and our response to that. And that information will come out with the publishing of the school report cards. But we do have that data available. Mr. Hart has access to that data as well. And so while we cannot divulge some specifics, if there are questions as to whether there is growth or whether there has been other changes or challenges, he can speak to that information. But Dr. Rola will give you any, any additional information that is necessary to address whether or not we are in compliance with our rules and what our legislative mandates have been.
Actually, Ms. Clay's going to do that, but I think Ms. Zook has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
As to the three-year versus four-year during all of these transitions and going from No Child Left Behind to ESSA, is that something that can be considered or will be considered?
Oh, well, we will consider a number of things. Let me, let me say that.
I mean, there's nothing magic about three.
Well, right now, there is, because that's, that's what our, our stable population, our rule, our standard has been. So there is, for this year, there is something magic about three. As to whether or not legislative changes and rule changes and stakeholder engagement as we are moving forward in this year of transition for ESSA, there are a lot of possibilities.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I want to address the fully operational issue. And certainly, every student in public school in Arkansas that was required to test last year took the Park test. But when we're talking about academic distress and a test being fully operational, we can't look at one year. It's got to be three years. And so for Park to be fully operational for the purpose of ADE being able to recalibrate those thresholds, it would have had to have been taken by everybody for three years. And that just didn't happen. And so I just wanted to be clear on what I think is an important difference between every student taking the test and being fully operational for the purpose of academic distress and being able to recalibrate those thresholds.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you. If I may briefly address the board again.
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Couple of general comments, and then perhaps a more specific one or two. From the legal perspective, I think we have fairly clearly shown and presented evidence to this board that the process that the ACTAP and academic distress rules require was not followed. I mean, I've heard the department talk about fully operational, not immediately done, things of that nature. So if you were to look at the statutes on academic distress So if you were to look at the statutes on academic distress, or if you're, you're probably fairly familiar with them, there's an indication, if you'll notice, that what your law is, so to speak, on how you go about making these determinations is in here, is in the ACTP and Academic Distress Rules. Okay? Academic distress is what this says it is. So that's why we have placed such an emphasis and priority today on trying to show this board that the process was not followed. And rule changes that should have accompanied these things were not made. And the end result of that happening is the appearance here before you today with the question of classification of a district in academic distress. So these, we think, are serious fundamental issues. We've had changes in the testing system. We're in a time of transition, in a time of flux. And given the fact that the process, in our opinion, was handled the way it was, we believe there are some fundamental issues here with classifying Hope as a district in fiscal distress. You know, on the federal side, there's been flexibility, I think, for handling priority schools with the waivers in place. So we would ask for your flexibility and your consideration here for not placing the high school in academic distress. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Walter, I think Ms. Sook has a question.
Okay. I'll give you a chance to address this. You know, we have 1,100 or a little more schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's 26 here. Some of them are appealing, four or five. But the vast majority did not see this as an issue and agreed that ADE had, in fact, in this board, followed procedure. So if, if, none of the ones who aren't in academic distress are trying to point out reasons other than their test results about why that happened. I guess if it had been 95% instead of the lower five, I, I would look at it maybe differently. I'm not an attorney. You know, we're not, and you are. And we have two different attorneys saying two different things. So, anyway, if you want to respond, I'm not sure there was a question there, but.
Well, no, I, there, there was, and, and I understand it. What I would have to say is this, I mean, we, we worked with Hope. We had Hope situation. I, I understand in a very general sense what you've just said about the magnitude of the issue. But why we're, with all due respect to that, we're here and, and trying to help Hope in its unique individual situation, look at the process, look at the scores, and obviously Superintendent Hart, I think, has delineated that very well, and you know where those are, and determine, all things considered, where this lies. And again, I, I can't, I can't speak for the other schools and districts out there who have not chosen to avail themselves of an appeal opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any other input from the Hope School District or the department? If not, we're.
If I may, Ms. Barnes, could you come back just for a moment, please? Let me ask you a couple of questions on the, what is our mechanism for getting intensive support into our school districts? What are our mechanisms?
Mechanisms are designations, well, request, one, as, as we are able to, to meet it with capacity. Secondly, if you are a priority school, you get, you will receive intensive support. If you are in academic distress, we are required to be on site within 15 days, do an evaluation within 30 days, provide that, those recommendations. And then we are consistently working with priority and academic distress schools. If you are a focus school, meaning that you're not addressing your gaps, we work with them consistently, but we're not necessarily on site all the time. We have put measures in place to assist the districts to work with internal capacity building and to be able to sustain by requiring a locally hired school improvement specialist. If you are in partnership with the state, meaning under the control of the state for academic purposes, you are receiving intensive support. Are those?
So, so outside of a requ, how many requests do we get, independent requests?
Dr. Wile would probably be able to answer that more accurately than I, but I don't receive many coming across my desk for
Right.
The type of support that we have placed in our rules or in our accountability plans.
And, and our review of ACIP is simply that, a review?
Yes, sir.
Annually for, for the districts, and that's part of our monitoring. But that is not the same as intensive support. So without a designation, then those districts that may need intensive support from school improvement, unless they ask for it, it is not available to them in our current statutory and regulatory framework. Is that a correct assessment?
I believe that is a correct assessment, particularly with respect to capacity building issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, feedback? If not, we're ready to consider a motion on this agenda item, and that's a consideration of academic distress, appeal for Hope High School. Was it a pleasure? I'm sorry, Mr. Hart, do you have?
We're going to the Commissioner and Mrs. Barnes' last back and forth. If it would be possible to ask for that intensive support at this time to keep the label from happening, I would more, I would gladly accept.
That's duly noted.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Okay. Based on all the information that we've heard and information, and just the last bit of information from Mr. Hart, what is the pleasure of the board, Ms. Savers?
Based on Ms. Barnes' comment about addressing the needs of students, being our goal, I would move to deny the appeal for Hope.
Ms. Savers has moved to deny the appeal by Hope District to be placed in academic distress. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Barth. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to break for lunch and return at 12:30.